Okay, welcome. We're gonna go ahead and call this, call this meeting to order. We'll start with our flag salute. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning. Mr. Cannon, I believe, is absent this morning. How about Mr. Johnson?
I'm here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Herzog?
Here.
Mr. Sevison?
I think he's on mute.
Here.
And Mr. Haugie?
Here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. I'm Nathan Herzog. I am the secretary, but will be acting as chair today. Chairman Haugie is virtually with us, and we felt it's best to have an acting chair in person, so that's why we're operating this way. I'll try to do as good of job as, as Mr. Haugie does. So I'm gonna read a statement like I did last time, just to bring some understanding to what we're doing today. So, "Welcome, everyone. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business, to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and social distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered through a completely remote call-in process. Citizens who wish to comment should be prepared to use our call-in line," and I'll read that number a couple of times so you can write it down, "five three zero eight eight six one eight zero zero." That number is five three zero eight eight six one eight zero zero. "Please call in at the time I open public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, which will happen here shortly, or a consent item, or third, a timed item on the agenda. Your call will be cued through our county operator and transferred into the Planning Commission chambers to be heard in the order in which calls are received. If you receive a busy signal, please try back on the same number to be connected for comment. Please be aware that there is about a 30-second delay between our meeting proceedings and the chambers and your view at home. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time, so hold times will be longer if there are many callers. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and to ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so." So make sure you call in at the time the agenda happens, and want to welcome everyone to the meeting that's watching online. We've got some staff here. It's nice to feel clean and safe in this environment, so thanks to, you know, staff for providing a safe environment for us to conduct our work. We'll go ahead and move to the Planning Director's report.
Thank you, Chairman Herzog, members of the Commission, E.J. Avvaldi with the Planning Services Division. I just want to thank you, Chairman, for clearly outlining the meeting procedures and instructions for public participation in this meeting. This information is also included on our published legal notices in the newspaper and the notices sent to affected property owners with projects that are on the agenda today. It's also on our Planning Commission agenda and on the county's website. I would also like to add that the county has always had a call-in number to hear an audio of our public meetings. This is particularly beneficial for those who may not have internet service or who are in, you know, the rural areas of the county with limited service. This call-in line is just to hear a live audio feed of the meeting, and it has been recently expanded to allow over 200 callers. The number, which I'm gonna give out now, and I'm gonna give it, the phone number out twice. Once again, this is the number just to hear the meeting procedures. This is not the number that the chairman just mentioned to provide comment. So to hear the meeting procedure, or the meeting itself, the number is area code six one nine four eight three four zero six eight. And then there's also a conference ID number that you'll want to put in as well. The ID number is five one nine six zero nine eight nine one. And I'll repeat that. The ID number is five one nine six zero nine eight nine one. And once again, the call-in number for that is area code six one nine four eight three four zero six eight. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that. Moving on with my report, I do have a staffing update to share. As most of you know, we have not had a deputy in our Tahoe office for about 18 months now, since the retirement of Rick Erie. The agency director made an appointment and promoted Crystal Jacobson, who you all know. She is the new CEDRA Deputy Director up in Tahoe. Crystal's emphasis will be on the implementation of the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, which, as you know, she led that effort. She'll be working with many of the local stakeholders in Tahoe to proactively reduce the barriers to development, thereby creating, you know, opportunities for new projects, housing, redevelopment in town centers, infrastructure projects, among other things. Crystal will also assist us division managers, that's myself, building, engineering, and surveying with our teams up there in Tahoe as well. So congratulations to Crystal. Another change, change that happened in the last couple of months, our Housing and Economic Development Unit, which was within the Planning Services Division, that's been moved into CEDRA administration. Shawna Purvines, who will be here today speaking on a couple of items, she'll continue to lead this countywide housing effort along with Kathy Donovan, but under the administration of CEDRA. I wanted to share both of those changes with y'all. Moving on to our upcoming Planning Commission schedule, we have a three-week break until our next meeting after today. The next meeting is scheduled for May 14th. It's been pretty well publicized that that will be the Hidden Falls Regional Park Draft EIR meeting, where we will be accepting comments on the draft EIR. We won't be discussing the merits of the project or considering the project that day, but just accepting comments on the draft EIR. That particular item is scheduled for 5:00 p.m. that day, so that is a later meeting time than we normally start. There's also one or two other items that we'll have on that agenda as well, so I'm assuming we'll start, you know, probably around 4:00, 4:30 that day, and we'll have that figured out probably in the next week. Any questions so far?
Just a comment, and for anybody who's listening, and if there's a way to communicate this out to the people that are, obviously, would like to weigh in on Hidden Falls. One of the other commissioners, Commissioner Moss, made a very valid point this morning that said that written comments can be very effective during the circumstances that we're in. And so I would encourage that they email or send letters into the Planning Department regarding their position on Hidden Falls, because it gives us, as commissioners, more time to really concentrate on what they're saying, 'cause this, I think we will all admit, this is kind of a challenging kind of process that we're going through right now. And we want to make sure that we have everybody's input as we make our evaluations of this. And again, I know it's just we're gathering for the technical aspects, but I think there are people who would like to address that, and I think, again, the best way to do that right now under the circumstances is to put it in writing to us, and I can assure you, we read it and really consider it. Thoughts?
Yep, great, great point, and thank you for bringing that up. After May 14th, the next scheduled meeting is May 28th. At that meeting, we hope to bring back the Lakeside Redevelopment Project. That's not been confirmed yet. We're checking with the applicant right now to see if that date works, and also tentatively is a Placer County Conservation Plan. And then going into the first meeting of June, we have items scheduled through that first meeting as well. So a pretty busy schedule in the coming months. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. We've also asked county council to share a little bit about the legitimacy of our meeting and explain some components of that. Before, before you do that, I'd just like to invite folks to call in now for public comment for any item that is not on the agenda that you would wish to speak about. So that phone number is five three zero eight eight six one eight zero zero. Go ahead and call in now if you'd like to make public comment about items that are not on the agenda. Counsel?
Sure. We've received a few comments about the basis for this meeting and whether it should proceed, and I wanted to let everyone know that the meeting, and specifically the procedure for this meeting, is in compliance with both the Brown Act and the Governor's Executive Orders, specifically Executive Orders N. 2920, N. 3320, and N. 3520. Those orders modified the Brown Act requirements to allow public meetings, such as this one, to occur through teleconferencing means. And the agenda for this meeting and the procedures that will be implemented during this meeting today are all in accordance with those requirements. In addition, the setup for this meeting here and all of us in this room is in accordance with the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's guidance to limit gatherings of more than 10 people. No more than 10 people will be allowed in this room at any one time, and the seats have been positioned in order to provide six feet of social distancing. There's also been some comments about whether this meeting is an essential government function. The nature of this meeting is such that it complies with both the Governor's Executive Orders and the Placer County Health Officers' Guidance on Essential Government Functions. Specifically, the Governor's Orders identify government operations as an essential activity. Executive Order N. 3320 allowed critical infrastructure to continue, which includes government operations. In addition, the Placer County Health Officers' Directive on March 19th, 2020, noted that all Brown Act meetings of the governing body of all public agencies are deemed essential government functions. There's a misconception that essential activities are examined by looking at each project that is reviewed. That's not the case, as the activity is the conducting of the Planning Commission hearings, which are plainly identified as essential government functions. That being said, direction at the state and county level on the handling of COVID-19 is constantly changing, and if there is a change in direction on those fronts at either the county or state level, those would be implemented here as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions? Okay, going into public comment, I think we'll go in order as those calls have been received. And so Sue, will you help us connect the first caller?
Do you have any? Let me double check. No, there's no public. Chairman.
Okay, with no callers at this point, I think we've had the delay. We probably have reached a delay at this point to move forward. So I'll go ahead and close public comment, and now move on to the consent agenda items. What are the wishes of the Planning Commission regarding consent agenda items?
I move approval of item A.
I second.
Yeah.
I may have missed it, but did, did we open it for if anyone wanted to pull items off consent, or members of the public wanted to?
Not yet.
It's only the agenda.
So we're just seeing if anyone on the commission would like to pull any consent agenda items?
The public. Or the public.
Right. I'll do the public next. Okay. Okay, do, do any of the public, is, are there anyone from the public that would like to call in and address removing any of the consent agenda items? I think we'll do a minute delay or so to see if anyone would like to call in. And again, that phone number is, just say that number, five three zero eight eight six one eight zero zero. Okay, not, is there anyone on the line? Okay, not having any callers after a minute delay. I think we'll close the public comment, and we'll entertain a motion from our commissioners about the consent agenda items.
Again, I'll move that we approve consent item A.
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Haugie, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
And Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move to the timed items at this point. The first item is-
Actually, before we do that, we should open, did we have public comment for any items not on the agenda?
We did.
Sorry, my fault.
That's okay. I like being double-checked. We're gonna move on to the timed items, and so the first item is the Long Crow Distilling Company. I think I said that right. Members of the public may now begin calling in at five three zero eight eight six one eight zero zero to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. So Amy Rossig, all right, you're up.
I'm gonna bring the applicant into the hearing room.
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Clapper. You're live in the hearing room. For you to listen and participate at the given time. Mr. Clapper, you're live in the hearing room?
Yes, 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 I am. I'm here. Thank you.
There we go. Then you can hear me. So, good morning, Chairman, and members of the Commission. My name is Amy Rossig with the Planning Services Division. The item that I have before you this morning is a conditional use permit for a Long Crow Distilling Company. The project site is located at 12807 Lone Star Road in Auburn, is located on the north side of Lone Star Road, and is bound to the east by Lake Valley Drive. Lone Star Road is located right off of Highway 49, about a mile south of Nevada County line. The project site is zoned farm with a 4.6-acre minimum, and surrounded by properties that are also zoned farm with a 4.6-acre minimum, or farm with a 20-acre minimum. The properties to the southeast are zoned single-family residential with a combining ag and a combining minimum building site of 100,000 square feet. Most of the surrounding properties are developed with single-family residences, and the property to the south is developed with a small ag operation and open space. The applicant is proposing a conditional use permit to operate a food products manufacturing facility to produce 120 gallons of distilled spirits annually. The purpose of this facility is for recipe development and brand recognition. So there will only be one employee, which is gonna be the property owner. Hours of operation will be from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday. There will be no public access and no public tasting room. There'll also be no scheduled deliveries. The applicant will pick up raw materials from local businesses in the area in 55-pound bags or in brewer buckets, which are basically five-gallon buckets. The proposed facility is gonna be located within an existing detached accessory structure that's about 2,000 square feet in size. There is already a single-family residence on site, which is located 168 feet from the detached accessory structure. There are a couple of pump houses and a pond on site. There's a paved driveway that connects to Lake Valley Drive, and this access point is also gated. So to give you a couple of pictures of the property, the building on the left-hand side of this image is where the facility is gonna be located. And then the building on the right-hand side, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a silver car on the right and a brown roof underneath the trees, and that's where the residence is located. Some more pictures of the site. The picture on the left is the picture of the access point where the driveway is. That's where the gate is located. The picture on the right is more of a close-up of the building where the facility is gonna be located. There's also a little turnaround access point right in front of it. So the facility is gonna be located in just a portion of an existing building. 840 square feet of this building will be bonded, and that's where the manufacturing is gonna be taking place. The applicant's gonna start in Area B, and this is where they're going to be mashing milled grains to convert the starches into sugars. This will be done by heating the milled grains in 152-degree water for about an hour. Once this is complete, there is a separation process to separate the wort from the grain hulls. Then the wort is transferred to a kettle and boiled for an hour. Then the wort is cooled for about 70 degrees using an onsite water storage tank. It's then transferred to a fermenter. The fermenter is gonna be in Area C, and during this process, this is where the yeast is added to create the alcohol mixture. The mixture will stay in the fermenter for about a week at 69 degrees Fahrenheit. The mixture is then transferred over to the distilling process, which is gonna be located in Area A. During this process, the mixture is run through a still twice. Then it's aged in 53-gallon barrels, and the amount of time that it's aged in these barrels depends on what kind of alcohol it is, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on that in my next slide. And then finally, the product will be tested and bottled, and that will occur in Areas G and H. As I mentioned before, the product is gonna, the applicant is proposing to create 120 gallons annually. So there will be two 53-gallon barrels of aged whiskey produced each year, and 14 gallons of neutral whiskey produced each year. The neutral whiskey will rest for about five weeks, and then it is bottled. So every year, there will be production of neutral whiskey, which is gonna be 64, 750 milliliter bottles. The 53-gallon barrels are gonna be aged for a number of years. The single malt whiskey will be aged for two years, and the bourbon will be aged for four years. So it won't be until year three that the single malt will be bottled, and it won't be until year five that the bourbon will be bottled. During the bottling years, 240, 750 milliliter bottles will be produced. At any point in time, the maximum number of 750 milliliter bottles produced is gonna be 546, and the maximum number of 53-gallon barrels at any point in time is gonna be six. So Placer County Code Section 1710-010 requires a conditional use permit for the manufacturing and processing of food products in the farm zoning district. This discretion provides additional oversight for issues such as noise, traffic, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental review. In the case of the proposed project, traffic will not increase in any manner that exceeds a typical single-family residence. Only, the only employee will be the property owner who lives on site. There will be no public tasting room, and all deliveries will be through carriers such as FedEx or UPS. Raw materials are going to be retrieved by the property owner, therefore ensuring that the use is virtually inconceivable from the character of the existing residential use. Furthermore, all of the processing will occur within an existing building. Because of this, there will be no environmental impact, and the project is exempt from further environmental review. Finally, additional oversight is gonna be required by federal and state agencies. Applicant will be required to obtain approval from the U.S. Department of Treasury, Alcohol and Tobacco Tax and Trade Bureau, and the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. Also, there is local business license and building permit requirements. So the conditions of approval have been implemented to require approval from all these, evidence of approval from these departments. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission find this project exempt from environmental review and approve the conditional use permit to allow a food products manufacturing facility to produce 120 gallons of distilled spirits annually. I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Any questions?
If I could, please?
Yeah.
Amy, I, I mean, 120 gallons, it's, that's really, I mean, we're talking-
It's a very small operation.
If he didn't ask for permission, he could probably be doing this, and nobody would ever know the difference. But, but, so I guess what I'm getting at, we have some very restrictive hours, and it seems like to me, for a one-hour operation, especially when, or for a one-man operation, especially when the one man is the property owner, what difference does it make? I, I mean, it just is, this is, this is something for a neighborhood beef to be made of later. It's 2:30, and he was working with it, you know, and I just, we're not talking ins and outs of people. We're not talking about noise production or anything else. Seems to me it shouldn't matter.
So those hours of operation were proposed by the applicant. That hasn't been implemented by staff, so that's always something that could be discussed, is to remove that from the conditions.
That would be, be my two cents worth, is that those days go away. Thank you.
Any other comments? Or questions? Yeah, for Amy? Okay. Not seeing any. We'll move to the applicant. And so, Mr. Clapper, would you like to add any details to the presentation?
Actually, I, a little hard to hear the discussion, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, especially Amy, for helping drive this to this point. And thank you to the Planning Commission for their consideration. And beyond that, I think she covered all the aspects really well. So unless there's any questions to me, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Not seeing any questions at this point for you. And so I think we can go ahead and open up for public comment at this point, and we'll come back to you if there's some questions we have as a result of public comment. So I, I think we'll take a pause to allow the delay to catch up. So go ahead and call in at this point if you'd like to make public comment about Agenda Item Number One. Just mention the phone number while we're waiting, five three zero eight eight six one eight zero zero.
And while we are waiting, I would like to mention for the audience that Commissioner Sam Cannon, I believe, has joined by Skype and is listening in. Now, since he wasn't here for the staff report portion, portion of this item, he wouldn't be allowed to vote for this item, since he hasn't heard the whole presentation, but he would be able to vote on any subsequent items.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Should, a question for you. Should we have a roll call in, or is that unnecessary?
So for all of these votes, since we are doing them telephonically, and there are people appearing telephonically, they all need to be on roll call, but traditionally, that's the way we handle these anyways, is roll call votes, so.
So I don't need to do another roll call at the beginning of the meeting like we did?
No, not for each item, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do think it's important, though, that if, if somebody drops off or is no longer in attendance for an item, that we do notify that, that, the public of that. But otherwise, I don't think for each item you need to do it.
No, I wouldn't, no, at the beginning of the meeting, we did a roll call, and Sam wasn't here.
Right.
But he's okay just to jump in mid-
So he can't vote on this item, 'cause he did jump in mid-item?
Yeah.
But if he fully, if he hears a complete item, then he certainly can vote on it.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, anyone on the line?
There are no callers.
Okay, we have no, all closed public comment at this point. And, you know, if, if anything came up, do, did you guys want to address anything with the, with the staff or the applicant? Just do a check-in, or if you'd like to make a motion, we're at that stage.
I'm glad to make the motion, if we're not getting a response from anybody. I would recommend that we find this project categorically exempt from the environmental review pursuant to provisions of Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act, guidelines in Section 18.36.030 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, Class I existing facility.
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Johnson. So now that Mr. Cannon is here, could I get a vote from Mr. Cannon?
He's not gonna vote on the side.
Oh, he's not? Yes, he just, I'm sorry, Mr. Cook just said that. Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Herzog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
He's on mute. Same, yeah.
You're on mute, Larry. Have to read his lips.
Yeah. Okay, yes. Couldn't get him muted.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sevison. And Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I would further move that we approve the conditional use permit to allow a food, a food products manufacturing facility to allow the manufacturing of 120 gallons of distilled spirits on an annual basis based- distilled spirits on an annual basis based on the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Second.
Cut a first and a second.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Johnson, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, there were no written comments, there were no public comment, but I'll go ahead and read the appeal just to be safe. But the decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date. It shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $619. Moving on to our second item.
I need to call the commissioners back because we're having an issue on the website with the transmissions, so we want to give them a moment to call them. So make that announcement to the commissioners as well, that they need to go get in.
With them?
The ones that are Skyping.
Okay.
They have to call, he has to call them back. So let them know so he doesn't have to text each one of them.
Okay, so commissioners that are participating virtually, I, I guess there's an issue that our IT folks will need to call you, or call you back to reset some things. I'm not sure about the details, I'm just hearing word of this. So instead of each one of you being contacted individually, you should expect, I think, some kind of phone call to clear up any, any of the issues related to IT. Did I do that?
Maybe we take a five-minute break while we work this out, and then we can come back.
There's some technical difficulties that we're experiencing, so we'll just take a five-minute break so IT can resolve those and make sure that everyone's able to participate. So we'll take a five-minute break. All right, are we all set? Is everyone, is IT good to go? Okay. All right, everyone's back online, so we'll call this meeting back to order from the break and move into our next timed item, which is Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, Secondary Dwelling Unit Specific Plan Amendment. Members of the public may now begin calling in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. So Jennifer, Jennifer Bias, this is your presentation.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, Jennifer Bias from Planning Services here to present this item for you. This is a specific plan amendment to eliminate a policy regarding, in the specific plan... Let me switch slides here. Here we go. So the requested action today is to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding this policy in the specific plan, that we would be removing the policy regarding secondary dwelling units. Of course, Placer Vineyards is located in the far west regions of Placer County. Depicted here on our map is our plan area, and baseline and the county line make up the boundaries. Again, if you're familiar, and I'm sure you guys are, we come quite frequently and talk to you about this project. It's a specific plan community, covers 5,230 acres, 14,300 residential dwelling units, as well as master plans for commercial office mixed juice development in the area. The map that depicted here represents all the various land uses that will be proposed to be developed over the next 20 to 30 years. Since 2017, there have been about 15 state housing laws that have been enacted to target additional affordable housing being provided in the state of California. One of those, or actually multiple pieces of the legislation amended the state code for accessory dwelling units, also known as secondary dwellings. The state mandates that all local municipalities allow the creation of accessory dwelling units. This is not new. The section of code has been updated probably since the early 2000s multiple times. We have been here at least two times before amending these sections of our code to make them consistent with the state code. These requirements that we're talking about today actually became effective January 20th, and actually, the state code was written that our code is null and void until we update So I just want to really talk briefly about what the changes were. We will be back, hopefully in May, with our updates to our code for the whole county on the secondary dwelling unit ordinance. Today, we're focusing on Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Area, but the changes in the secondary dwelling code, first of all, the one is mandated or said, we're not calling these secondary dwellings. They did change the definition and terminology to be accessory dwelling units. They're allowed all on one lot without discretion. You can have a primary and a junior unit and a accessory dwelling unit on a single-family lot. The state also mandates development standards for maximum unit size, setbacks, lot coverage, parking, owner occupancies, and fees. And again, like I said, we have been working, staff's been working, Shawna Purvines and a bunch, the housing group has been working to update our code for all of these changes. So we're not going to dive too deep into what the specific changes are. We can certainly answer that if you have questions, but really, what we're going to focus on today is our specific plan. And since we've started implementing the specific plan, we've known there's been some conflicts. Policy 3.7 was one of those potential conflicts, and with the new housing law changing, we needed to update the specific plan to make this policy consistent with state housing law. Recalling that, Policy 3.7 does require when you are proposing a subdivision, and if you want secondary dwelling units, that they be counted towards your overall property maximum limitation. If you recall, there's 24 properties within that plan area split up with all those different colors. 22 of them have development agreements that specify the number of units, residential units that would be allowed, and this policy requires that if you wanted to have a unit with a secondary dwelling, you would have to utilize one of your assigned units to create that secondary dwelling. With this new state law, this policy will no longer be effective. If you have a primary residential unit, you're entitled to an accessory dwelling unit on your property, so those units will no longer be required to count towards the overall 14, 300 unit assignments.
Amy, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
What's the difference between a secondary unit and a junior unit? I assume it's the square footage size, but I know we've been talking about 750 square feet has been the recent state law that is allowing a lot of flexibility for those kind of units, but I wasn't sure what a secondary is.
So, Jen...
Before you answer that, Jen, can I make sure commissioners, when you speak, you speak close into the mic?
Oh, okay.
I understand that the chairman and our planning commission clerk are coming in really clear, but everybody else is not as clear, so just get closer to your mic, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will do.
Okay, so I'll just kind of repeat your question. You're wanting to know what the difference between an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit is. And really, the junior accessory dwelling, it's created within the walls of an existing or proposed single family, and is limited to no more than 500 square feet of space. So it's really like taking maybe a garage or a larger bedroom and converting in that to a unit. There's some language in there, again, we'll get into more detail probably next month about what can and can't be, exit ingress, fire standards, all kinds of stuff on these units. But it's basically a 500-square-foot unit in a single-family dwelling.
Yeah, what about the secondary?
So your secondary, so your accessory dwelling unit is still that 1,200 square foot can be attached or detached.
Oh.
So there's, you can have, and Shawna's here, so if I make a mistake, she will correct me. But, so you could have a primary residential with a junior unit inside, and then you can have a, your secondary, what we typically call secondary dwelling, which is now going to be called an accessory dwelling unit, that could be the 1,200 square foot.
The new state law for 750 and under square foot, where you can be right up to four feet of the property line, I mean, what would that be classified as? I mean, under those two, I mean, it's obviously not part of the primary structure, it's a separate structure. Is that right?
Well, if it's a separate accessory structure, yes, the new setback rule according to state law is four feet for these units.
Up to 750 square feet, I believe, is what I heard. No?
I think it's four feet for any accessory dwelling unit.
So even up to 1,200 square feet, you can go within four feet? Wow, okay.
So now there is provision to, I don't want to dive too deep into there, we'll get there, for fire safety also. So, you know, we'll get into that and how we're going to be implementing that and updating our accessory dwelling code.
Okay.
Hopefully next month.
All right, thank you.
We're just a little bit in advance of, with this specific plan amendment to get rid of this policy.
Jen, can I ask a question? If, are we going to have to go through all the specific plans and modify them based on this approach?
No, I don't believe so. Placer Vineyards, with our history here, the unit count was pretty specific in the specific plan and has, again, through development agreements, you, it's, you're limited to the number of residential dwelling, and this policy makes any secondary dwelling count towards those, your total unit counts established by the specific plan. So I don't anticipate other specific plans have a similar policy like this, and if it does, we ultimately may need to come forward and fix it.
Mr. Chairman? Comment? I had been told earlier at TRPA that the Tahoe Basin was excluded from that legislation. Is that the case or not? Maybe county council can enlighten us. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that, too, but, yeah, the legislation, I mean, nothing is going to change about the TRPA code, and again, we'll be talking, this is really specific to Placer Vineyards.
Thank you.
Next month, we'll be talking about how the, these legislative changes will be applied, but it's my understanding, nothing is changing about the basin.
Thank you.
And I can speak a little bit on that. The requirements are a state law requirement, which the county is required to follow. The county is working with TRPA as to how that fits with respect to TRPA requirements as well, and we don't have any definitive guidance on that at this point, other than that the county is subject to state law requirements and needs to follow those.
Amy, maybe I'm just confused, but aren't we putting the proverbial cart before the horse if we, if we expect to have more details about this in May? Shouldn't we just wait on these projects until we have that detail so we make the right decision?
Hey, I think you're absolutely okay moving forward today. This, what we're talking about here is a specific plan policy, and all the legislative changes that have been adopted by the state are in effect today. We are just behind in getting our code up to date, and with respect to that. And a lot of that just has to do with the timing of moving that forward. We started out before the shutdown, we notified all the MACs, and we've been progressively moving forward to bring that to you, and we're now at that point. This item is being proposed because there are some changes coming through with the specific plan, that staff has been working with the developers in the specific plan, that this policy needs to be updated to be consistent with state law in order for the other changes that some of the developers are requesting to make. Does that answer your question?
Jennifer?
Yeah.
Please. The deed restrictions that go with these, what, what do those relate to?
The deed restrictions for...
It says deed restriction, prior to issuance of a building permit for a secondary dwelling, the owner shall record a deed restriction which addresses the restrictions on such units contained herein. What are those restrictions?
Are you, what are you reading from? Is it the...
I'm reading page three of four of the, of the packet. 3.7, Policy Standard Dwelling Units, number I.
Is that property 4B? Sorry, I'm not following where you're at.
Page three of four.
Three of four, okay.
Item number I?
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. Oh, yeah, that is the existing Policy 3.7, that is from the specific plan. So yes, when the specific plan was written back in 2005, this language, the policy, and then all of the design and development standards, item one, A through I, and then item number two, were consistent with state legislation and county code in 2005. So the deed restriction requirement, if you recall, when you built a secondary dwelling prior to, I think, 2014, this, this portion of the law changed. You actually had to, you had to record a deed restriction that required, I think, owner occupancy of one of the units. So, so the policy, that's a, the policy, that's what we're trying to... So, the policy, that's a, the policy, that's what we're trying to get rid of.
Was it restricted to be a low-income rental or anything like that?
No, it was not. They've, I think that we have some incentives created if you do those types of things, but the original policy, this policy in our old, like I said, prior to 2014, if you built a secondary dwelling in the county, you had to record a deed restriction acknowledging it was a secondary dwelling, I think, couldn't be sold separately, and one of the units had to be occupied by an owner. So, sorry, I was like, there's no deed restriction, but you're right. That's, this is part of the problem of why we're saying we need to update our specific plan to be more consistent with where secondary dwellings have moved since 2005, when the plan was originally adopted.
Thank you.
Yes. Which, again, gets back into bullet number three. This policy does set up standards for the development and design of the secondary dwellings that are now inconsistent with our existing secondary dwelling ordinance, as well as these changes. So, striking this will help solve the problem, as well as, again, that policy had specifics about charging fees that were at the same level of a primary residential dwelling. And again, that's inconsistent with state legislation. In fact, the Board of Supervisors in early January has already updated our fee program to be consistent with the state law fee programs for secondary dwellings. And we, again, we'll go into more detail about that, what those are, but that change has already been made. So, again, staff's here. This is a staff-proposed specific plan amendment requesting that this policy be deleted and that any proposed accessory dwelling units in the specific plan would just be governed by the existing county code. So, for all the development standards, any kind of requirements, setbacks, where footage, any kind of limit, design limits, would all be governed by our existing code. We're also proposing and asking you to make a finding with the state housing legislation update. They provided a statutory exemption, and we're asking you to make a recommendation to find the changes to the specific plan exempt from CEQA. And with that, I can take more questions, but we're here to ask you to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding this change.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. Will you also represent the applicant, or is there someone else you want to?
We are the applicant.
Yeah.
It's a Planning Services Division is the applicant on this.
Are you the same person?
Mm-hmm.
Did you want anyone else to speak to that, or?
Unless Shawna has anything to add.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Okay, very good. I think we'll open it up to, you know, do we have any more questions from the commission for staff?
I guess, I guess, but more, this is probably just kind of being picky, but.
We'll start over again. Question for you. It talks about, I'm on page 25 here. And it references local agency means city, county, or city and county, whether general law or charter. Are we not talking county only here? Or does the county issue building permits and so forth for, for other jurisdictions?
So, page 25 is a memo that was produced by HCD that gave technical guidance on the changes to the state of California. So, all counties, all cities in the state of California are subject to this section of government code, and so they're referencing both cities and counties. We won't be changing anything. The cities themselves have to adopt or update their own codes to be consistent with state housing law.
Okay. One more question, if I could, please. Talks about on page 26, the bottom section, this section shall remain in effect until January 1st, 2035, and as of that date is repealed?
And I can answer that one. This attachment actually references sections in the government code that are being amended by the state law. So, what you're looking at on page 26 is the actual language in the statute.
Okay, and the statute goes away in 2005?
Right. There are certain provisions in the statute that, that stop to operate on certain dates. So, that's, that's what you're looking at.
Thank you.
But nothing that county is approving. This is all state legislation.
I would mention we've had no public comment received to date on this item.
Anything else, Commissioner Moss?
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other questions at this point. I think we'll open it up for public comment, so make sure that you call in 530-886-1800. Is there anyone on the line? Okay, we'll move forward with moving through those.
You're live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record.
Public comment. Call in. Hi, I guess I should turn down. Yes, this is Michael Garabedian. Am I being heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I need to turn down the video, obviously. I'm Michael Garabedian. And I have some questions.
Mr. Garabedian, if you don't mind, can you talk very close to your phone? You're, you're cutting in and out and becoming very quiet. So, we'll start your three minutes, and if you talk into your phone, that would help a lot.
I can't. I didn't hear anything you said for the last minute.
Oh, okay, just make sure you speak into your phone, please, and, okay, go ahead. Your time has started.
Am I sound a little bit am?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, well, some of my questions have been answered and asked. The main question I have is for the specific plan, what is the potential number of ADUs that would be affected? In other words, 15 ADUs. The tick points.
Are you, are you still there?
I'm here.
Okay, was that, was that your only question?
No, no, there are other questions. Are you on the phone?
The sound has changed dramatically.
Yeah, you're cutting in and out, too. I don't know what the.
Oh, we can hear you great now. Go ahead.
Okay, well, you want the other question? Because, no questions, I mean, once I was on it. So, the other.
Tell him that it's your speakerphone.
Are you, are you on speakerphone?
Yes.
Can you take it off speakerphone and just talk into the phone, please?
Okay, I don't think I'll be able to hear you now.
Oh, my goodness, that is much better.
Hello?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Can't hear you. All I hear is somebody talking on the TV, but that's turned way down.
Okay, well, we can hear you. Go ahead.
The only way I can hear you is if I turn on my speakerphone.
Yeah, we can't, when you do speakerphone, Mr. Garabedian, we cannot hear you.
Okay, I'll turn it off. The second question is, if this, if ADUs could have separate families from the ownership, and then once, once an ADU is established, can those parcels be further subdivided so that the ADU could become a new property or separate parcel? And then the follow-up question of that is, once that ADU is on a separate parcel, does that mean both the original parcel and the new parcel could also have, would also have to have ADUs? And I didn't understand the answer of the question of the need for having this ordinance right now before the main, the main one is done. Those are my questions, and I don't really have a comment unless I know the answers.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it, and I'm glad we, we got to hear everything you wanted to say. So, thank you, Mr. Garabedian. Is someone else?
You didn't hear everything I would have to say because I would like to know the answers to the questions.
Uh-huh, and so, we'll, we'll.
And I might have a comment.
We will have time for staff to address some of the issues that you brought up after we hear from all public. So, thank you. Someone else on the line? Yeah. Yeah, if you're listening, not using your speakerphone would help a lot, we're finding. So, if you would, would my, if you would please talk into the phone when you, when you call and get connected with us, that would help a lot. Okay, no one else is on the line, so I think I'd like to invite, you know, staff up to, to address anything that came up.
I think if I understood the question, first question being, how many residential units would be available based on these changes? The total number of residential dwelling units that are in the specific plan, of course, are 14,300. So, each lot that is current, would be subdivided under that plan, would be entitled to the secondary residential unit and/or junior unit contained within the house. They are not separately legally sellable, so, and that's under today's rules. You can have a primary residential dwelling and a secondary dwelling, and you cannot sell one-off either way or subdivide your property unless you have enough property to subdivide, of course, then you can. Is there a third item?
He, he asked why now, similar.
Oh, oh, okay. So, again, we're actually in the process of implementing Placer Vineyard specific plans. We've approved multiple maps, and now they're actually in the process of gearing up to subdivide, create those maps, and start building houses. And with the next item, you'll be hearing about some of the changes that are being requested. And with those changes, this policy, we needed to take a fresh look at it to say we need to do an update. Again, if we were not here today doing an update, all, any lot that's created is guided currently under state law. So, we would have ideally, yes, could have brought the second dwelling unit ordinance changes forward, but we were obligated and required to reach out to the MACs prior to coming to you, and we've done that. Unfortunately, with the shutdown, they have not been able to meet, so we're ready to move forward. I think we were ready two months ago to move forward with the changes to the state law.
Jennifer, I think he also asked if these properties could be split at some point, if there's, you know, if an ADU is put on it and then.
They cannot be split, I mean, unless they are subdividable, right? But if you have a lot that meets the minimum acreage, you can have your units. You can't subdivide them off further unless you have enough property to subdivide, just like the same under today's rules.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close public comment because no one else is on the line, right?
Could I say something further?
No, no, thank you. I'm closing public comment. Appreciate your, your comments. Sue, is anyone else on the line? Okay. Well, is there any discussion the commission would like to have related to this agenda item?
You know, I don't think we have a choice. This is all being forced down on us as local decision-makers by the state, and so all we're doing is opening the door to saying, okay, what we currently have is not in compliance with the state, and so we're, again, opening the door so that we can make this change, and the proposal will come back to us sometime next month for that change, as I understand. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion unless there's a further discussion. Taking it that there is not, I will move forward with that. I would like to propose that our commission recommend the Board of Supervisors that, I'm going to kind of change the language just a little bit, that we adopt a resolution amending the Placer Vineyard specific plan to delete Policy 3.7 based on the following findings presented in the staff report. Anything else I need to put in that?
Second.
Let's take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Johnson. Mr. Cannon is offline, so we're going to go with Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Herschog?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council, I have a question, just that, are recommendations appealable? No, this item would not be appealable. Okay. Great. I think that we'll move on to our next timed item for Placer Vineyard specific plan, first development phase property 4B. Members of the public may now begin calling in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. We've got Nick Trefero.
I'm going to bring the applicant in. I'm going to bring the applicant.
Oh, great, yeah, bring in the applicant online and we're ready for your presentation. Again, the phone number is 530-886-1800.
Good morning, Mike, Mr. Smith, Mr. Hirsch, Mr. Meyer. We have you live in the hearing room to listen to Nick's presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Nick Trefero with the Planning Services Division. So, the item I have before you today is the Placer Vineyard specific plan, property 4B, small, tentative map modification and development agreement amendment. So, the planning commission is being asked today for its recommendations to the Board of Supervisors to approve a small, best tentative subdivision map modification for 4B. That will include revising, too, the property 4B conditions. Condition 66 would be changed, would change A Street roadway connection requirements to Watt Avenue and eliminate intersection improvement requirements on Watt Avenue as well. Condition 227 would be modified, the timing would be modified for affordable housing construction. Then the second recommendation would be approval of the development agreement amendment to revise Section 2.6 of the development agreement to change the timing for required affordable housing. So, just to give you a little background on Placer Vineyard specific plan, the specific plan area is located in the southwest corner of Placer County near the city of Roseville, and is located in the Dry Creek community plan area. The specific plan covers a total of 5,230 acres and include the ultimate development of 14,300 units, essential units. Property 4B is located in the central portion of the specific plan area. Baseline Road is just to the north, and Watt Avenue is to the east. The property is zone Placer Vineyard specific plan. So, your planning commission approved property 4B tentative subdivision map back on December 14, 2017. Included approval of three residential villages, whoops, if I could get that here, three residential villages for a total of 225 medium-density residential lots. Also included approval of a CMU, commercial mixed-use lot that would allow for 88 dwelling units. And to achieve the 10% affordable housing requirement, 31 units of affordable housing would be built on the property. As you can see on the map, access to the property would primarily be provided from Baseline Road via 12th Street. Secondary access would be off of Watt Avenue, and the collector off of that roadway would be A Street. Also, the Business Professional Power Center site, which is not a part of the subdivision or this development phase, is located directly to the east of 12th Street. So, proposed modifications, including changes to A Street and Watt Avenue improvement requirements, include revising the A Street roadway connection to Watt Avenue to be emergency vehicle access only and eliminating intersection improvements on Watt. Terms of modifications to affordable housing, both condition. Terms of modifications to affordable housing, both condition 227 and the development agreement would be amended to change the construction, triggers for affordable housing construction. So the applicant is requesting these modifications due to the significant financing costs and bonding limitations associated with the project as currently approved. This slide shows the approved onsite infrastructure plan as well as the proposed onsite plan. On the left, you could see the approved plan showing the connection of A Street being constructed as a two-lane roadway all the way up to Watt Avenue, and Watt Avenue would be fully signified with roadway tapers constructed. On the right-hand side, the proposed plan shows that the two-lane A Street would actually stop at A Street and E Drive, and the remainder of A Street would be constructed as the EVA that would connect to Watt Avenue. Also shows the removal of the signalization and turn lane improvements for Watt Avenue. So the only improvements at Watt would be the encroachment of the proposed EVA and installation of an emergency access gate. But, so the two-lane roadway construction from E Drive to Watt Avenue and the signalization of the Watt Avenue intersection would be completed by future development phase. So regards to affordable housing, originally as approved, condition 227 and the development agreement required a developer to complete the design and obtain development approvals for the affordable housing project when 50% of the single-family building permits have been issued, so that would be at the 113-unit limit. And then the developer was, is required to complete construction of the affordables when 75% of the single-family building permits have been issued, and that would be at the 169-unit limit. With the modification, all 225 single-family lots would be developed prior to any affordable units being constructed, and the development agreement would be revised to provoke, provide additional assurances that affordable units will be constructed. So with amendment to the DA, section 2.6 Affordable Housing, the amendment would require six moderate-income units to be constructed within and concurrent with the market rate residential units. This could be accommodated by deed restricting market rate units, constructing duplexes and/or secondary dwelling units. Two units would be constructed per village. In fact, the revised tentative map, that's what your staff report today, shows lots 1, 2, 3, 13, 14, and 41 reserved for these moderate units. Also, the commercial mixed-use site is still identified for the 25 low and very low income units, and the developer would be required to provide all infrastructure so that site is shovel-ready for these units by the 63rd building permit. So to provide further assurance that the affordable housing to the county would be developed, the owner of the CMU site and the Business Professional Power Center site, which is outside of the development phase, would be required to record an irrevocable offer of dedication, dedicate the land to fee, to, in fee to the county if specific milestones for affordable housing units are not achieved. So there's three milestones. You can see on the slide, two years from build-out of the 226 single-family units, the developer shall submit the project for design review and approval and initiate negotiation of affordable housing financing agreement with the county. The second milestone, three years from build-out, the developer shall initiate construction of the low, very low units and complete them by year seven. The last milestone, 10 years from the notice of acceptance of the backbone infrastructure for 4B, the construction needs to be completed for the six moderate-income units and the 25 low and very low units and certificates of occupancy issued. So with environmental view for the specific plan, the final EIR was adopted and certified in 2007, and three subsequent addendums have been adopted along with approval of mitigation monitoring reporting plan. With this project, the 4B map modification is considered exempt from SEQA based on SEQA Guidelines, section 15182 and 15183. This is because the modifications are consistent with the specific plan and comply with the development density established by the specific plan, excuse me, and analyzed in the final EIR. These are the recommendations to the board.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
Yes, Nick, I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask. On the secondary unit is one of the options for meeting the affordable housing requirement. Do we have a minimum size on the square footage for those units? Because now, you know, there's been lots of talk about, you know, 750 square feet and 1,200 square feet, so is there a minimum that we consider actually qualifies as an affordable housing offset for the developer?
I don't believe there's a minimum I could ask, if Sean is in the room, on Purvines, my people are answered.
Is the, would be the minimum, they could do, okay. Well, I, I just, well, I'll- But that would still be measured as an offset to their requirements, to the 31 that they have to build as related to this project. If they're, if they build 750-square-foot units of those 31, then they're, they meet the standard of the 10%, is that correct?
Only six, uh, lot, uh, units.
I don't know. Got a, got a mic?
I can't hear him.
It is hard to hear him. It's really hard to follow. We could live with some minimum size of that.
So Sean Purvines, Community Development Resources Agency. So the proposal is that they do have 31 units as their obligation, 10% of the 313 units. They had originally planned to put all 31 on the mixed-use, the single commercial mixed-use site, which included commercial plus 88 units, 31 of those being the affordable. The proposal is that six, the moderate unit, six, six of the 31, which is the moderate units, will be accommodated in the single-family up in the earlier phases as secondary or duplexes, whatever is allowed under state law under the accessory dwelling. So that would leave then 24, 25 units remaining that would still be the low and very low on the mixed-use. The, the ADU units, if those are built, if that's what the, they choose to do as part of the moderate, they have a maximum square foot size of 750 to meet the affordable requirement.
Okay. My concern, and I'll just throw this out, because I'm, we're waiting for May when you come back with your recommendations or how it's gonna, the policy's gonna look. My concern is a 750-square-foot unit really doesn't fit a family very well, and I think what we really have been, our objective has been to make affordable workforce housing, and that would qualify more for families, I would think, because 750 is probably for maybe an individual or a couple comfortably. 750 is probably not gonna meet that. So that, that's just my concern, if there, if that's, because that certainly is the cost factor. 750 is a lot easier to construct at a reasonable cost to the developer or the builder than-
Which is an apartment building, it was two-bedroom, 750. Yeah, but, it's about that size. It's about equivalent to a two-bedroom apartment.
It's the applicant.
Oh, sorry.
So, I'm sorry, I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
And they're not luxury apartments, it's your standard, average, two-bedroom apartment.
Is there a way we can mute the applicant until their opportunity to speak? Can you mute them?
They need to mute themselves.
So Alan, Alan, we can hear you guys in, with your chatter, would you mind muting till we invite you for comment? Nick, did you have more? Oh, okay, oh, well then we'll move to the applicant.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Let me see, this is property 4B, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so eventually the Watt, the Watt Avenue connection is gonna be made in future development? Is that gonna be done by the same property 4B, or is this gonna be relying on somebody else?
Well, that would come along with either the development of, off a trade center when the BP, PC sites develop.
I can't really hear you very well.
So that would, that would come along with a future development phase, either the Business Professional Power Center site when that's developed, or properties over to the east of Watt Avenue? So wouldn't it be, it wouldn't be occurring with property 4B?
So this could be passing the responsibility off to another project?
It would be, yeah, it would be occurring at a later phase.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
Okay, any other, any other questions for staff? Okay, thanks, Nick, we'll call you back. We need to move to the applicant, Alan Hirsch and Company. Go ahead. Mr. Hirsch, if you'd like to provide some comments about the proposal, anything to add for the commission?
And I'll find different members of the folks on the phone to answer the questions. The one, the one item on the marketplace drive and the connection to Watt Avenue, that roadway is in the Placer Vineyard fee program, so it was, it's being advanced development by our project, we looked at it, realized it's not required for the initial homes we're building, and staff occurred, and then ultimately, it's not, we're not avoiding the cost, it's just picked up by the fee program overall. As, as a relation to the logic on the affordable and the size of it, I'm gonna ask Frank Meyer, our CFO, to respond to that and to why, why this came about in the first place.
Hi, this, hello, this is Frank Meyer. I, I, I'm not sure I followed the question on, or, or the comment regarding the size or the applicability of the unit. The, but regarding the accessory dwelling units, I, that, those at approximately 750 square feet would be comparable in size to the affordable units that would be developed on the CMU parcel, and that's about the equivalent of a typical, you know, affordable two-bedroom apartment unit. We felt, you know, basically the, the reason for this request and the deferral and concentration of the units in the CMU parcel is to make the overall financeability of the project possible. With the pre-existing affordability requirement, there is just an inability to bond the units, to secure the backbone infrastructure that supports the entirety of the Vineyard Master Plan. So this is, is basically a financing necessity in order to advance the project at all this first phase. I, I may have missed on what the questions were, I'm happy to answer them if I, if I didn't cover the topic.
I just wanna understand that the reason for the delay is because of the financial burden that it was gonna put on you to construct these earlier on in the project, made this a much more challenging project for you, so it needed to push it off. Did I, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. With, with that obligation to construct those in the initial phase, you know, prior to any of the other, you know, basically concurrently with the first medium-density homes that are going in, it would not have been possible to either secure the financing for the affordable project or to bond for the market rate unit. So it would basically be financially infeasible to advance the project at all.
Would you anticipate that many of these 31 units might fit into 750-square-feet size?
We haven't projected any designs, you know, advanced the floor plans at this point. And I would expect, yes, on average, that would be what you would expect for a two-bedroom unit. And, you know, that, that, yeah, I would expect there'll, there'll be a mix of units between the accessory dwelling units and the MBR zoning, as well as the, the apartment project and the CMU piece, there'll be a range of units that fit various affordability levels.
Do you consider a 750-square unit a comfortable size for a family?
That's a typical two-bedroom unit, yeah, so it depends on the size of the family, of course, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff or the applicant from commissioners?
This is Mike Smith, McCann Thompson. We did wanna clarify a little bit about the access to the project, based on the questions that were forwarded. As originally approved, there would have been three points of access for this project. There are two to Baseline Road, one is the road that you can see as 12th Street on the tentative map. There is also an offside improvement requirement to construct a road through property 7, over to 14th Street, and then make a second connection to Baseline Road, and that condition has not changed. So there would be two points of access to Baseline Road. What was requested was the elimination of the connection to Watt Avenue, which would have provided the third point of access. I think based on the documents today, if approved, there is, I've been doing the study for the, when they looked at the removal of that intersection, it was determined that a subsequent development phase might be required to construct that connection if traffic conditions warranted it. There is a phrase in the development agreement that says, if that road is not being constructed by others, when the BP-PC parcel is developed, it would need to make that connection, so 4B would be obligated to construct that road over to Watt Avenue, build the signal in the Y to one block, if it had not already been done by a different development phase. I wasn't sure if that was clear.
Okay, well, thanks for that clarification.
Okay, let me see, I guess I'm not, maybe your last statement kinda confuses me a little bit, at least what I was interpreting is that the development agreement, or the big master development agreement, really didn't specifically require 4B to build the intersection to Watt Avenue? Is that correct?
Yes, 4B, the tentative map we're approving, construction of the road over to Watt Avenue and the improvements to Watt would not be a requirement for the 225 units or the CMU parcel. But if the BP-PC parcel within property 4B does initiate a development phase, the construction of that road would be required at that point, but it's not a current requirement for this tentative map.
So I'm still confused by the, by the completion of your project, are you gonna be, if nobody else has taken up the requirement to complete that intersection, is that gonna be your responsibility?
This, this is Alan Hirsch, maybe I can clarify. We, with, as part of our ownership, we own the BP-PC piece. It's not currently in phase one, but what staff put in the conditions is, and made it clear, when we go to develop that BP-PC parcel, we'll need to complete, if, if some other property through the fee program or has developed, hasn't completed that improvement to Watt Avenue, we will be required to complete it as part of the BP-PC development. We concur with that condition, we concur with the entire staff report, and I should've mentioned, it's been a long process to get here, and we thank and appreciate all the work staff's put into this with us.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is that you're not necessarily just passing the responsibility off to another parcel, but it depends on, as it develops, you may have to go ahead and do it yourselves, is that correct?
That's my understanding correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other comments at this point, I'd like to open up for public comment, and I understand we do have a caller ready to go, so let's bring up the first caller. We can start with the first caller and then see who he's in.
Um, do you wanna wait while the callers can listen to the last transmission?
Do you want to wait while the callers can listen to the last transmission?
So, this is, definitely call in if you're interested in public comment for this item. The phone number is (530) 8...
Let me go ahead and grab it.
(530) 886-1800.
Good morning, you're in the hearing room, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Veronica Blake at Placer Community Foundation. Our book is Housing Crisis, and one of the many tools that we can use to meet the housing needs of our community as well as our RENA numbers is inclusionary housing. The concern here is that when you make modifications for property 4B, you set up a situation where other owners will want the same deal. We saw this play out over the years when developers insisted upon paying fees in lieu of $1,000 a unit instead of constructing affordable units. And while we don't think that meeting our affordable needs should be entirely on new development, this is one of the tools that we can use, and construction sooner rather than later would certainly demonstrate the county's commitment to the seriousness of the issue. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the queue?
Good morning, you're live in the hearing room, please state your name for the record. We need to beep because they're still listening to it.
Sure.
Good morning, you're live in...
Mike Garabedian. Hello?
Hi, Mike, we can hear you.
Hear me?
Yep. Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, Placer County tomorrow is opposed to the affordable housing changes, opposed to the limitation on evacuation routes, opposed to not going ahead with Watt at this time. The, there are just, lots of problems, this shows some of the fallacy of having a multi-ownership situation.
Good morning, you're live.
Oh. Well, I'm confused, let me turn off the...
Mr. Garabedian, we can hear you, go ahead.
Opposed to the affordable housing changes.
Can you, Mr. Garabedian, can you turn off the volume to the video feed?
I'm not sure where I am, I'm not sure if I'm speaking or not. The concern about the changes in the development agreement, the multiple changes in the plan, no time to mention them, are serious concerns. The good thing here is at least we're getting a review here with an opportunity to understand more before this goes to the Board of Supervisors. We're quite concerned about the inadequate public comment, you know, asking questions and then don't get to have answers before I can finish my comment, even if my questions are less than three minutes, this is a problem. But the process here is not working very well, it's hard for me to understand how to make it work, and I have been for several years on all kinds of video conferences, and this is the most confusing one, to understand when I'm heard and when I'm not heard, to have to be using my phone for, when it should be part of the video, and it would be the easiest thing for the county to do. So, I hope there's some improvement on that, and I don't see this forum as any way sufficient at all for public comment, but hopefully the Board of Supervisors will be, and I assume staff will be available. And I regret that you're unable to manage this decently for the public, decently, but I mean, in a way that the public can ask questions and be extremely limited, though, in being able to interact with the commission. Better luck on that next time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we heard your comments and appreciate the feedback. We want to do our best to serve the community, and I think we heard everything that you said, so we're doing our best here, and thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else on the line? It may be worth waiting just another minute. Whoops. Yeah, we'll pause to see if anyone else calls in from the public.
Waiting to see if that caller that disconnected is going to call back.
I'll go ahead and move to close public comment at this point and bring it back to staff, Nick and the applicant, if there's anything you'd like to address based on the public comment, feel free to do that at this time.
The only thing I would, given Alan Hirsch again, what I would add is, this doesn't change the affordable overall obligation. I think what it does is, in fact, puts together a mechanism and a plan that makes it feasible that it can be realized. Without this modification, there's just no viability to the project.
I was going to add, too, I think the first commenter mentioned about the RENA allocations, and the delay on the affordable housing is just on 2.3% of the affordable housing, that's actually in the specific plan area. And, of course, ultimately would be, there's assurances to ultimately have the affordable housing develop or the properties evolve.
Well, I think the concern was that maybe other developers within Placer Vineyard might also try to opt for this because to push it off to make their project more feasible, at least from a lending standpoint. So, I think that was one of the concerns.
And one of the things with this property is it's the first, one of the first properties coming in, so it's, the reasoning behind it's the upfront infrastructure costs are going to be excessive for these first properties. I think the case will be different as we move along with the future properties and development.
Well, as was stated, I think we all agree that we need affordable housing, workforce housing now, but we're not going to get it if we can't get projects to be more viable. And so, you know, it's kind of a, bit of a quandary to deal with that, which, you know, it's better to, is it better to let them push it off and at least get it done? I don't know. I'm still struggling with that.
If the upfront costs are too high, then none of it gets built. It just gets put on hold indefinitely. So, I think a little consideration into financial feasibility is important to make sure that it happens.
Again, I understand that, but I just want to make sure that not the other developers within Placer Vineyard don't see this as an open door to doing that as well, because then we get a lot of this housing pushed way off down the road, so, just my concern.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we can move to the commission discussion and other questions, or, so, anything you want to discuss related to this agenda item?
I guess I'd make a motion then. And, so, we want to take action, make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors based on the findings contained in the Placer Vineyard's property 4B small lot investing tentative subdivision map modification, staff report dated April 7, 2020.
Scoot Paul, speaking to you, Mike.
Okay, it's based on the staff report. Okay, determined that the Placer Vineyard's property 4B small lot investing tentative subdivision map modification is consistent with the previously certified final environmental impact report, that it meets the criteria in the Public Resources Code, Section 21166, and is exempt from the CEQ pursuant to CEQ Guidelines 15182 and 15183, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Commissioner Cannon, second.
Okay, let's take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Cannon, so vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, number two, approved Placer Vineyard's property 4B small lot investing tentative subdivision map modification within the previously approved Placer Vineyard's specific plan area, subject to the modified conditions of approval attachment C, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Just would like to note that this would be a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Well, it's a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Commissioner Cannon, second.
Okay, let's take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Cannon, so vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three, again, a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, adopted ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Second Amendment and Restated Development Agreement by and between the County of Placer and the LDKAREP3, Placer owner, LC, relative to the property 4B of the Placer Vineyard's specific plan, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Commissioner Cannon, second.
Let's take a vote.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that recommendation will move forward to the Board of Supervisors. Before we move on to the next agenda item, should we take a short break? Okay, five-minute break.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is probably directed at Clayton, County Council, but I heard item two, and because of these technical glitches, it kicked me off before the voting began, so can I add on as an affirmative for item two?
The problem with that is we've already voted and closed it, so...
My question would then would be, I would request that you look into that, because of the state legislature, the role can remain, can remain open, and members are allowed to add on, so I don't see any provision in county code that would preclude me from being able to do the same, or any other commissioner.
Right, and I guess the way to do it would be just to reopen that item to include your vote, since it is closed, if there is an interest in the commission and the chair to do so.
Doesn't change the...
Yeah, Commissioner Cannon, with all due, it's not going to change the outcome, so I don't think we need to do that. We definitely want you involved, but is there a particular need or issue that you'd like to state?
No, I mean, I was just, I mean, for future meetings when we're going to have to, as long as we're going to be Skyping, those of us that have a need to Skype in, I think it's going to be a recurring matter.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, yeah.
So, no, if it doesn't need, if it doesn't need to be reopened, then I'll just defer it to County Council.
Okay, it's a good point, though, to be aware that we have that possibility if we need to in the future. Yeah, thank you.
Sure, and, yeah, it really is up to the chair and the commission, the vote won't change, as I did have all were in favor other than Mr. Cannon, his vote wasn't registered, so, yeah, for what it's worth.
Yeah, let's go ahead and move forward to a five-minute break, and we'll come back and go to item four after the break.
11:51.
We'll return at 11:51. Okay, let's come back from our break and get the meeting going.
I'm going to start.
Is Mr. Cannon back? Okay, very good. Well, I've done a little thinking and would like to honor Commissioner Cannon's interest, and so bringing it back to the commission, the discussion or a motion regarding allowing Mr. Cannon to be involved in the vote, unfortunately due to technology, it seems like there was a glitch there. So as a commission, if you are interested in allowing to reopen that item, I would entertain a motion to go back and allow that to happen, so.
I make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second, so let's take a vote to reopen Agenda Item Two, to allow Mr. Cannon. Would this be to reopen the item completely, or just the deliberation portion? Yeah, thank you for the clarification. This is just a deliberation, I've already closed public comment, and so we do not need a presentation from staff, but we're just talking about the deliberation and discussion opportunity for the commission, and so we have a first and a second, so let's take a vote to reopen that item.
I already made the motion.
Yes, I have a motion from Mr. Johnson, a first, and a second from Mr. Nader, so could I have a vote from Mr. Cannon, please?
It wasn't Mr. Nader.
I think it was Mr. Haugie.
It was Mr. Haugie.
Oh, thank you, sounded like it was behind me. A second from Mr. Haugie. So could I have a vote from Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersaug?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
So since we've reopened the deliberation and discussion portion of item number two on the agenda, I'd like to offer an opportunity for any commissioner to state anything they'd like, and then refer back to an original motion.
Since you've now reopened it?
Since you've now reopened the item, then there was a motion that was already provided. If the interest is simply to add Commissioner Cannon's vote to that item, then you can make a motion to that extent as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we open the vote back up so that Commissioner Cannon can make his vote also.
So that original motion will stand, and we'll just allow Commissioner Cannon to add his vote, which would not require us to then vote again. Right, so you would make a motion to add Commissioner Cannon's vote to the already provided vote, and then that would require a vote of the commissioners, and then Mr. Cannon, assuming that vote is granted, that motion is granted, then Commissioner Cannon could provide his vote for the item. Okay, got it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open the vote up so Commissioner Cannon can add his vote to the original motion.
I'm not sure they can hear you on the mic.
I make a motion that we open the vote back up to the original motion, so Commissioner Cannon can add his vote.
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote on that.
I have a first from Mr. Moss, and I believe that was Mr. Nader.
It was.
A second, so to open the vote to add Mr. Cannon's vote to item number two, could I have a vote from Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersaug?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, since that motion's granted, then we would need to take Commissioner Cannon's vote on item two, the Placer Vineyards Specific Plan, and in specific, the motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to adopt a resolution mending the Placer Vineyards Specific Plan to delete Policy 3.7.
That being said, could I have a vote from Mr. Cannon, please?
My vote's a yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to conclude that item with saying that that will be recommended to the Board of Supervisors. Now we're going to move to our next agenda, item four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Commissioners, colleagues, and County Council.
Yeah, thanks for helping us understand that process, appreciate that. Okay, so the next timed item is a Winery and Farm Brewery Zoning Text Amendment. Members of the public may now begin calling in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Nikki Strigan will be presenting this item. Good to see you, Nikki.
I'm going to bring the applicants in.
Yeah, okay, bring the applicants in and be ready to go.
Good morning, you're live in the hearing room to listen to Nikki Strigan's presentation. Do I have Nick Bapponi, Michelle Lewis, Josh Hunzinger, Laura Rath, Danielle Pullman, and Amber Conboy, and Stephanie Holloway?
Yes, you can also hear the call.
Okay.
Thank you. Good morning, and actually, it's almost afternoon, so good afternoon. Nikki Strigan, Senior Planner here, back at the commission from February 13th to bring forward a zoning text amendment to the Winery and Farm Brewery section of our code. I'll jump straight in here, by way of background, we currently regulate wineries and farm breweries in accordance with an ordinance that was adopted in 2008. That ordinance was revisited in 2013 to address promotional events. Previous workshops were held with the Planning Commission between 2014 and 2017, and a mitigated negative declaration was prepared when an item was brought forward to the commission in 2016. It was identified that an EIR was to be prepared, and so that notice of preparation was published on October 18, 2017. On November 1 of that same year, a public scoping meeting was held, and then in April 2019 to June 2019, a draft EIR was released for public comment. January 31 of just this past year, the final EIR was released. So staff presented this item at the February 13 Planning Commission, and it was continued, and as such, staff was asked to do the following, to explore refinements that support existing facilities, ensure that the ordinance supports new wineries and farm breweries, to clarify language pertaining to large wineries, so wineries producing over 20,000 cases per year on 40 acres and over, and to address and explore code compliance concerns. Just a quick snapshot here of the industry that we had talked about last time, the first two bullet points are taken from the 2018 crop report produced by the Agricultural Department. The county has 293 acres of grapes, just under $1.5 million in revenue generated from grape and wine products, 17 total public tasting rooms, and three farm breweries that have been permitted most recently in the last six years. All this being told, this conveys that the farm beer and wine industry is small but growing.
Nikki? Back to the last slide, the 17 total public tasting rooms, those, that's total for the county, that's not what was done in the last three years also, or the last six years?
Total for the county, correct?
Total for the county, so it's just the three breweries were permitted in the last six years. Thank you.
So we have 17 public tasting rooms, and those are inclusive of those three farm breweries. Wineries only, so meaning only production takes place at those facilities, there are four of them, and then there are two facilities by appointment only, so they're not public, they're only by appointment. Placer County currently regulates wineries under, what's, Section 1756330, that's what we're talking about today, and, you know, this slide we had spoken about last time just emphasizes the suite of land uses that are recognized in this section of the code, and so kind of working up from the bottom to the top, they really do hinge on one another. Crop production is the foundational use in a winery or a farm brewery, and then we have the farm brewery, which is the production facility where production takes place, the tasting room, of course, and then events are sort of layered on top of that. At the outset of our project, we identified these four project objectives, they were to preserve and protect farmland, enhance economic viability of agricultural operations, including sales of value-added products, support agritourism, and balance the needs of various stakeholder groups, and address land use conflicts. This is a map that many people are familiar with, and as mentioned in the previous slide, the quantity of tasting rooms reflected are, you know, this map actually shows the number on the ground at the time our notice of preparation was released, so this is the project area map that you see in the EIR. So, you know, not reflective of all 17, but this map appears, as I mentioned, in the draft EIR, and it represents existing facilities at the time of the notice of preparation, zoning, which is an important factor in determining winery and farm brewery development, the predominant area of impact, which is shown in that black dashed line, just as a sort of conceptual area, and in the western part of Placer County, and was identified based on things like where we see the predominant zoning, where this use can take place, soil types, climate types, and so forth. This is where grapes grow, this is where we see that synergy of uses happening already. And so I'll just quickly orient you, Highway 80 running east to west in the red, the large amount of dark green represents zoning that is farm greater than 10 acres, that lighter green is zoning that is farm less than 10 acres, and then the yellow, which is a little hard to see here in the room, which is near Porshubar Penrin, Granite Bay, up around Meadow Vista, that's residential agricultural zoning. The general changes are outlined in the following 10 items on this slide and the following slide, which were discussed on February 13 at the Planning Commission meeting. I'll touch on these in this presentation in relation to the refinements that are being proposed as a result of the discussion and direction from the Planning Commission on February 13. In addition to what we'll talk about, I'll also make a note of two other modifications that are being proposed after the staff report was published last week, which I'll walk you through, and we have a memo to that effect that will be distributed. So above here, 1 through 5 on the screen, obviously the code section we're referring to, 1756330, is proposed to reflect farm breweries in the title. We've talked about the definition of farm breweries, which is included in the February 13 staff report. We have also talked about amending the minimum agricultural standard, which is increasing from one acre on-site or one acre sourced locally to two acres on-site, as recommended by the Agricultural Commission. And then we'll talk about four and five again, as far as agricultural promotional events and special events, and the table that outlines allowances for maximum capacity and the use permit requirement that's tied to those. We have defined a new 10-acre minimum parcel size tied to buy right events, clarified hours of operation, and looked at updating standards for potable water and waste disposal in addition to access standards, those two we'll also touch on again today, and then, of course, the accessory use restaurant provision as allowable, subject to a conditional use permit. We have also discussed that as of our February 13 Planning Commission meeting. So the 15 refinements are outlined here, again, I'm going to highlight them in subsequent slides, but you can see that this correlates with, excuse me, let me back up here, the proposed refinements, I'll just state, are made in response to the February 13, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. They are reflected in the Winery and Farm Brewery Zoning Text Amendment Strike Through Version contained in Attachment C, Exhibit A of this staff report. The staff report describes each of these refinements one by one, and highlights each in bold italics. For our purposes today, I'm going to highlight those refinements that are more than just cleanups, and respond directly to correspondence and discussion from your February 13 Commission meeting. I also want to note that each item presented correlates with a SEQA memo found in Attachment B, Exhibit E, that was prepared by the Winery and Farm Brewery Zoning Text Amendment, EIR Consultant Rainey Planning and Management, who is, of course, on the phone with us today. The memo was written to evaluate the additional suggested changes to the proposed zoning text amendment, which align with the input received at the February 13 Planning Commission meeting. The memo also demonstrates that the proposed amendments are consistent with the environmental analysis conducted for the zoning text amendment, and does not necessitate recirculation of the EIR. So as mentioned, I'm going to highlight some of these in subsequent slides, so I'm just going to move through these. And we'll talk about agricultural promotional events, so this is, let's see, reflected as change number one in the staff report. So this is, let's see, reflected as change number one in the staff report. Agricultural promotional events have been discussed broadly as the type of event that supports the branding and the marketing of an agricultural product. The original intent of this definition wasn't meant to be exhaustive, and so to convey that broad intent, additional language has been added here. So in addition to winemaker and brewmaster dinners, pickup parties, release parties, et cetera, the underlying language and bold language here is added, and any parties, professional events, or gatherings that support the promotion of the agricultural product. You can see some additional text here as it relates to the exclusion of tasting room patrons, and so that is a refinement that was also proposed to clarify that tasting room patrons are not included in maximum attendee limits. Again, a note in the memo from Rainey Planning and Management, that's Attachment B, Exhibit E, with respect to existing winery and farm brewery facilities that were evaluated in our EIR. Given that normal patronage of a tasting room is ongoing activity occurring at the time the SEQA analysis began, that day-to-day patronage was treated as part of the environmental In a comment letter received from a potential large winery facility, so we're talking about 20,000 cases and over, a request to add additional attendees allowed under the agricultural promotional event definition was suggested, subject only to a conditional use permit. And so, you know, staff believes that this scale of operation wasn't originally anticipated because Placer County simply doesn't have these types of facilities today. The thought here is the project objectives could still be met as long as the primary use as a winery is recognized through the establishment of a vineyard, wine production facility, and so forth. And so you can see here the proposed change under, oh, I don't have the exact section, let's see. This is change number nine in Section D4A. For large wineries located on 40 acres or greater, additional attendees may be permitted subject to a conditional use permit. So again, looking at the special event definition, this is a cleanup that's concurrent with the agricultural promotional event definition, just clarifying that the number of people who can be at those events excludes staff and tasting room patrons, again, for the same reasons that were described in the previous slide. And otherwise, no change to the special event definition. On this table, again, this refinement is being proposed for the benefit of large wineries, and you can see that footnote three, I don't know if you can see that, it is very small, but it has been proposed to state that large wineries on 40-plus acres may be allowed additional attendees and number of special events subject to a conditional use permit. So as stated previously, a large winery on 40-plus acres may have capacity to hold events greater than a small winery. For the same reasons, the tenets of this proposed change can be supportive of the original project objectives, including the ability to support agriculture and support agricultural Accordingly, also, the proposed amendment to Table 3 also references an administrative review permit or a minor use permit, and this is to maintain consistency with the modification we'll take a look at shortly. That's a refinement made that correlates with number five in the staff report, and we'll take a look at that in the following two slides. We spoke about this at the February 13th Planning Commission meeting, and this graphic still holds true as far as defining the types of events and allowable event sizes. This graphic was shared during MAC meetings and public presentations over last fall and summer, and it identifies the type of events that you might see allowed by right under the proposed ordinance. So on the left-hand side, agricultural promotional events could include a 50-person winemaker dinner, a 40-person wine pickup party, or a 35-person birthday or anniversary party. And then on the right-hand side, once that sort of threshold over 50 is tripped, some examples include a 75-person winemaker dinner, a 150-person fundraiser, or a 200-person wedding. So staff previously talked about the proposed 10-acre minimum parcel size for wineries with tasting rooms allowed by right in three zone districts, ag-exclusive, farm, and forest. In a comment letter from February 11th of 2020, the Placer County Vintners Association recommended retaining the right to public tasting on 4.6 to less than 10-acre properties. Under the current ordinance, the parcel minimum for tasting rooms by right is 4.6 acres, but under the proposed ordinance, and specifically because we were allowing unlimited events by right, staff recommended a new 10 parcel minimum. So the refinement here, which is related to number five in the staff report, suggests an administrative review permit rather than a minor use permit for approval. So under that ARP, events would be defined and analyzed, and as with all discretionary use permits, impacts would be disclosed, so no impact here as far as a change to the environmental analysis, but it is sort of a lower level of review, but still discretionary review. So you can see that change reflected in the second bullet point here. Tasting rooms would still be allowed in all these zone districts, subject to, on 4.6 to less than 10 acres, subject to an administrative review permit. I want to just make a quick note here, production can take place by right on these properties still. So if somebody wanted to start up and not have a tasting room, they could still produce by right on farm, forest, and ag-exclusive properties, 4.6 to less than 10 acres.
Ask question on that?
Growing grapes and making the wine, so that can...
Right? Okay, thank you.
So here's how that looks in the proposed amended Table 2. You can see the strike-through minor use permits over here, under ag-exclusive, forest, farm, and forest. And then, sort of consistent with that, these CUPs in the residential ag and residential forest zone districts were also reduced to minor use permits, just to keep that kind of correlation consistent. Again, in a comment letter received from a potential large winery facility, a request was made to amend this section on hours of operation. The proposed provision would apply to both normal tasting hours and event hours, so you can see, I'll read it here, "All facilities shall be allowed to conduct normal tasting hours 10 to 6. Events shall be allowed from 10 to 10 on Friday, Saturday, 10 to 8 Sunday through Thursday, or as specified by a use permit." So that is new language that provides some latitude and flexibility to describe those hours of operation through a use permit process. The zoning text amendment proposes to update water and waste disposal, the water and waste disposal section, which is overseen by the Environmental Health Services Division and derived from regulations by the State of California. So that includes clarity on when a public well is required, and so you can see that provision outlined here, as well as when the Regional Water Quality Control Board, or not when, but that, the Regional Water Quality Control Board requires a wastewater discharge permit. And so what I want to focus on here is bullet point number three. Previously, staff had proposed that a facility owner can use a residential well through limited operations described in an administrative review permit. However, in a review of the proposed section that this is in, that's Section E7, and through a discussion with the Winery and Farm Brewery Task Force on direction from the Commission, a new refinement to this is actually being brought forward today in order to make the ordinance more user-friendly, more streamlined, and as it pertains to simply referencing the statute rather than outlining components of that statute in the zoning text. So Environmental Health Services staff applies, this is the name of the statute, California Code of Regulation Titles 17 and 22 of the California Safe Drinking Water Act, under the authority of the State of California, and can apply these standards in accordance with their own policies and procedures. It may do so with or without an administrative review permit that was previously proposed. So staff is actually proposing to strike this section and include only a reference to the state law, and that change would read, "Compliance with the California Code of Regulation Titles 17 and 22 of the California Safe Drinking Water Act shall be required." So I'll read a memo to this effect into the record at the end of this presentation to reflect that proposed refinement.
So, again, question, does that apply to the existing operations too?
If they are operating above this threshold, then Environmental Health Services Division could apply that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the access standards have been discussed in a lot of correspondence and in the hearing process, so I just want to reiterate, on county-maintained roads, what is required is a paved commercial encroachment according to the County Land Development Manual and local fire-serving district. On private roads, an encroachment permit is required according to the County Land Development Manual and local fire-serving district where the county-maintained road connects with that private road. And then, in addition, for facilities proposed off of private roads, the following is required: proof of access rights, in addition to approval from a road maintenance association or homeowners' association, or a majority of the individuals who have access rights to the road, and a proposal for a road maintenance obligation. So higher threshold here, higher bar for those facilities that are proposed on private roads. This is not a deviation from what was brought forward in February, but I do want to clarify a refinement that staff is proposing in relation to the Placer County Vintners letter that was received on February 11th, and then again on April 22nd. In that comment letter, the letter raised concerns for the fair application of access standards and the ability for staff to flexibly apply and right-scale improvements for winery operations. So the original proposed language does offer that flexibility, including for very small startups that are beginning, just beginning, you know, at the 500 and to less than 1,000 case scale, all the way to 20,000-plus scale operation. So the text is really designed to accommodate that range in operation without being really prescriptive as far as, you know, meeting a one-size-fits-all standard. As such, staff is proposing a refinement to clarify that flexibility, and the refinement emphasizes and highlights referencing the minimum safety standards by the local fire-serving district for driveway access to the facility structure. PCVA also addressed requirements for driveway encroachment standards, and so, and I'm sorry, I'll just make a note in the staff report, this is related to, number three, so change number three in the staff report. For encroachment standards, on a case-by-case basis, county staff can identify and consider design exception requests to the elements of the encroachment standard upon applicant request. So this design exception request was already included in the original proposed text. The exception, I think staff wanted to emphasize, however, is it's justified based on physical design constraints, and it must be prepared by a professional civil engineer. So this departmental process is cited, as I mentioned, but further clarified, just to emphasize that the determinations through this process are made through design and physical constraints rather than financial constraints. And so again, that correlates with the refinement, number three, in the staff report to Section E2 pertaining to access. Again, a request made by a large winery facility that may be of some benefit to other facilities in the county. You can see the bullet point number one here, tasting room is allowed if production takes place onsite or at another winery or farm brewery facility with the same ownership within Placer County and as allowed by state law. And then the second bullet point here, that wine and beer sales shall be allowed in accordance with state law for accessory use restaurants that may serve wine and/or beer produced by other wineries and/or farm breweries located within Placer County, subject to compliance with state law and the permit requirements outlined in 1756-330 subsection C. So in reviewing public comment related to larger winery facilities, which could accommodate food, preparation, and service, staff did evaluate both wine and beer products being served as part of an accessory use restaurant. And while properties, and some existing in fact, are otherwise permitted by state law to serve wine and beer if they're licensed accordingly with the alcohol and beverage control, this additional provision of the code would allow the service of wine and beer through the conditional use permit tied to the accessory use restaurant. And so the merits of that proposal might include support for products that are grown and made in Placer County, as well as the enhancement and diversification of ag products that are offered at some facilities. So staff noted that. And finally, staff would like to propose a refinement that's intended to reconcile in the code the allowance for an accessory use restaurant under the winery ordinance. While wineries and farm breweries can hold events, they are distinct land uses from agricultural event centers as defined in 1756-340. Primary distinction being wineries and farm breweries are regulated in accordance with federal and state law, and their primary operation in Placer County is dependent on state and federal licensing. So you can see here, this addition is to the community center, commercial event center, and agricultural event center, a section pertaining to ag event centers and restaurants. So that section reads, or the proposed change is, restaurants are not allowed as part of an agricultural event center unless otherwise permitted as an accessory use restaurant through Section 1756-030 as a winery or a farm brewery. And I'm going to get to our second refinement, but I'm going to get to it when we talk about correspondence, so getting there. Let's see, the impacts analyzed in the draft EIR are set forth here on the screen. They include a number of resource areas and also take into account the cumulative impacts from the project. From that list, the less-than-significant impacts with no mitigation are outlined on the left here, and include ag resources, air quality, land use planning, transportation and circulation, utilities and service systems, and then on the right here, that's with mitigation measures. So those have been incorporated into the code to some extent. They include biological resources, cultural resources, and noise, so there are additions in the code pertaining to noise, we'll talk about. There is one significant and unavoidable impact, it's a cumulative impact in the transportation and circulation section located at the intersection of Highway 49 and Kramer Road. Now, this particular impact was identified because at the time, even with, at the time we were preparing the EIR, even with mitigation, they were significant and unavoidable because they are out of the county's jurisdiction. So the county couldn't guarantee that these improvements would be completed, and the EIR considers those significant and unavoidable. You will see that the final EIR discusses an improvement related to this intersection as well as others along Highway 49 that Caltrans has committed funds to as of August 2019. The details of that funding and that project wasn't known at the time, so while they may otherwise affect the significance conclusion, the draft EIR still conservatively concludes and retains the impact as significant and unavoidable.
Nikki, can I ask a question on that? What is Caltrans plans for that intersection? Because we have an item on May 14th coming before us on Hidden Falls... Because we have an item on May 14th coming before us on Hidden Falls that that is going to be, that intersection's going to be impacted by that. Do you know what the plan is there?
I can broadly answer that, and then I do know that Public Works is on the phone if you need some more detail. But there are two roundabouts planned. These are scaled much bigger than kind of your typical roundabout, since this is a highway designation, as well as a barrier. So, I don't know if Stephanie Holloway or Amber would like to explain that a little more.
For that particular intersection?
Yeah, I don't believe the roundabout's actually not proposed at Kramer and Highway 49.
Yeah, it's Lone Star.
Correct. Lone Star, and there's another kind of...
And, yeah, Florence, or whatever the other one is before. Right. I'm just curious.
Nikki, this is Amber. Do you want me to write some additional clarification on the Caltrans project?
Sure, briefly, please, Amber. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. This is Amber Conblew with Public Works. As Nikki said, in August of last year, California put approximately $26 million towards a project they're calling the 49 Safety Improvements Project. They intend to construct two roundabouts, Lone Star and close at Lawrenceon, with center median, which will then restrict the Kramer 49 intersection to right-in, right-out only, which will mitigate the significant unavoidable... The left turns are the cause of the delay, so if you eliminate the left turns, then the delay tends to disappear, or reduce.
So, a barrier will be put up at Kramer so that no left-hand turns can be made, correct?
Correct. They're proposing basically a median barrier between the two roundabouts. So, all driveway and roadway connections between the two roundabouts will be restricted to right-in, right-out only. You won't be able to turn left.
Is there a timing on that?
I know that they have funding and are doing project approval and environmental documents. It's in the engineering phase. I don't know what their current timeline is. According to project programming, they're hoping to begin construction in maybe 2022.
For those who would want to go left on Kramer, once the barrier's up, will that force them to, what will that force them to do? Will they go take other roads, or will they go up and make a U-turn?
The intent is that you would use the roundabout to perform U-turns.
So, you'd use Lawrenceon or Lone Star rather than Kramer if you were going to make a left-hand turn? Is that it?
Correct. You would do basically a U-turn at the roundabout, come back, and then do a right, or take a right out of Kramer and then go down to the next roundabout, use it for a U-turn, and then proceed in the direction you wanted to be going.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
Thanks, Amber. So, looking at the project alternatives, there were three that were evaluated, a no project alternative tying a conditional use permit to those proposing weddings. So, weddings would not be afforded by right as a special event, but each facility proposing or having them would be required to have a conditional use permit. And then, we also looked at scaling back the agricultural promotional event allowance to 38 days per year. The DIR actually analyzed 59 to show a worst-case scenario, but 38 was determined in conjunction with environmental health and our staff. So, that's the reduced-scale alternative. A lot of stakeholder outreach was put into the effort, including meetings with Placer County Vittners Association and special interest groups between 2014 and 2020. Municipal advisory councils were visited March through May of 2015, and again, this past summer, July through September. The Agricultural Commission made a recommendation, both in April 2015 and then again in May 2017. You know, I think that date's wrong. We'd visited them sometime in the fall of last year, so 2019. And then, the Airport Land Use Commission made a determination in September 2019. A number of key issues have been evaluated, including event noise, code compliance, service of food, and what the term accessory really means as related to the accessory-use restaurant. Limitations on ag promotional events have been suggested, as well as start, supporting startup of new wineries and facilitating the growth of those facilities. I want to touch on noise and code compliance as it relates to this slide. So, code compliance, as your commission had mentioned in the February 13th hearing, is an important topic, and a number of commentators spoke to this in our draft DIR. Staff was asked to consider some options that included reinforcement of the policy between the Sheriff's Department and code compliance. In addition to that, we were asked to look at creating a mechanism for tracking compliance issues, including establishing a complaint line, as well as considering a requirement for disclosure of events, like some kind of signage or notification. And so, as it relates to the policy between code compliance and sheriff, you know, this policy exists, but there's no sort of code change in Chapter 17 that's being proposed. That is something that our code compliance division can work with as related to staff. For a mechanism tracking compliance issues, you know, there actually is a mechanism through the complaint process, the data collection process that we have. Then, reinstating a complaint line wouldn't necessitate a code change, again, in this section of Chapter 17. But a recommendation, obviously, by your commission or the Board of Supervisors could be made as a matter of policy. And then, finally, as far as disclosure of events, you know, staff didn't feel that signage really addressed the key issue, which was noise. And so, you know, staff wants to reinforce that new mitigation measures have been identified and incorporated into the text for noise issues. Effectively, those are setback requirements to attenuate noise to Chapter 9, the noise ordinance. And then, finally, as part of the February 13th staff report and the presentation made there, we had talked about sort of a proactive approach that code compliance began taking in 2019. So, we shared that our code compliance officer educated and worked with both operators and the neighboring complainer. And, you know, our thought here is if we employ that proactive approach, more compliance can be met.
Can I comment on that just quickly? Or a question? I guess it's more question for you, because I think I was one of the ones that was bringing up some thoughts on how to maybe address this. But it sounds like you're kind of shifting some of this more towards code compliance to try to address this rather than the Planning Department trying to address it, which was, I thought that if there was a way to track these events so that we knew how many they were having, that I think it would be interesting information to have, as well as something that we can reference back to if there is a code compliance issue. And so, what I was trying to do is see if there's a mechanism that we could do where they could just call in, no, excuse me, do it online, just an online, so that it isn't really involve staff. So, I don't know whether that would fall into code compliance's area, whether it fits into planning, but it seems like there's some way to do this so that it doesn't take up staff time, just so that we're, again, seeing where these events are happening. And the other is the signage, which I thought, the reason I had suggested that there be signage at these facilities, is that maybe we could cut off some of the issues if neighbors could see the phone number of a responsible person on-site that they could call and hopefully work through the issues rather than having to go through code compliance. Those are the things that I brought up, but maybe that's a code compliance issue to facilitate that. And I guess my question would be, if it is, are they doing anything about it? And do they have a timeline for doing something?
So, I'll take a crack at that one, and maybe EJ wants to step in. But we have been talking with Building Services Division, Code Compliance Division, about this more proactive approach. And so, but to answer your question, Chapter 17, we felt it didn't belong in zoning ordinance. So, EJ, if you want to...
Yeah, and I think what we've shown over the last year, year and a half, I mean, we work collectively with code compliance. I mean, a big part of what goes to code compliance are planning matters. So, our commitment is to be proactive and get out there and work with these, you know, with code compliance if these issues do arise. You know, 2019 showed, we didn't, you know, I'm not sure if we got one complaint, if that, I mean, it was...
It was, there were fewer, but we did receive some complaints, but fewer in, you know, in 2019.
Previously, right. But what it is, is a testament to us going out there and in conjunction with code compliance, working with these wineries to make sure they're in compliance. So, I think we continue to do that. And then, you know, if we do see a change, you know, I think we, you know, before that, we get prepared on how we're going to handle that. And just, you know, your suggestion of, you know, if there is a way to know about events and when they're happening, I think those are things we can start working on or get in the process of forming, you know, when we get this ordinance adopted. I think it's a great idea.
Would it be done through code compliance or just in conjunction with planning?
Yeah, I think both of us would work in conjunction on that. Yeah, this wouldn't be a handoff. I mean, we're, you know, it's, the ordinance you're considering today is Chapter 17, so we are invested in that.
Right, thank you.
So, looking at some correspondence that we have received, some of this is correspondence from the February 13th staff report and February 13th Planning Commission hearing. I want to touch on the last two as it relates to non-conforming uses. So, just kind of a recap or a review of what non-conforming uses are. The concept here is that if a use is legally taking place on the date of the adoption of a zoning ordinance or an amendment of a zoning ordinance, then it can continue. Zoning can't go back and stop somebody from doing something that they have already been doing as long as the use was valid and compliant with the pre-existing code. And so, those legal pre-existing land use activities are grandfathered, and they get to continue. And so, we actually have a code section that speaks directly to that. It's referred to as non-conforming uses, and that's directed by Section 176120 of our county code. We effectively, you know, in the section pertaining to applicability of previous use permits and applicability of previously established uses, we could just defer to this section on non-conforming uses, and it would be, we would treat them the same.
Excuse me, Nikki, I'm sorry, but when you grandfather something in, and it's been a long time since I've read this, but isn't there limitations on future improvements and modifications and so forth that aren't going to, that are going to limit it as opposed to figuring out a way to make or to allow it to comply currently?
Yeah, and I would have to go back and check the whole section, but the concept is if you expand the use, then you, you know, come into compliance with the code. There are provisions for an incremental allowance, and, you know, again, I'd have to review that section, but there are provisions that allow sort of incremental increases.
Yeah, and I can speak a bit to that. When it comes to buildings, if you have a building that's non-conforming, you're allowed to do maintenance and repairs, and provided that the work doesn't exceed 15% of the appraised value in a one-year period.
And so, I guess where I'm getting at is I've seen instances where it took a building owner several years to re-roof and make a few modifications so they could continue to be grandfathered. And I just, I think that there's got to be a better way to accommodate some of these existing things as opposed to saying, well, grandfather you in, and you're all right, because I think down the road, they'll realize the limitations that they're under.
Yeah, I mean, in your example, it's a testament to how the county, you know, we work with people to come into compliance. That's what, that process is in place for all land uses. And so, to this point, I just want to point out that the Winery and Farm Brewery Task Force was designed to do that, not only to work on this particular project, updating this code section, but also to facilitate consultations with incoming facilities, to work with existing ones who may have, you know, concerns and issues. And so, that's one commitment that I know that the county will continue to do as far as looking at building permit status, ensuring that public health and safety standards are met and so forth. So, wanted to touch on that. And then, finally, this last bullet point, we received correspondence from the Placer County Vittners Association on April 22nd, as well as correspondence from supporters of winery operations regarding making parcel-sized determinations that are very close and more precisely within a half acre to both the 10-acre minimum and 20-acre minimum. So, as you know, parcel sizes are determined based on the zoning designation of a property, both net and gross calculations of a parcel, and applicable land conveyance documents. And so, the proposed refinement allows the planning director to make a parcel-sized determination when parcels are within a half acre of the minimum size reference in three tables. And I'll read the memo to that extent in just a little bit. This additional refinement is being proposed today, and again, I'll read that memo once we hear from our CQ consultant on some correspondence that we've received and the effects of some of these, the additional two refinements. So, I will take a pause here and see if Nick Papani is available.
Good afternoon, this is Nick. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Again, good afternoon, Chair, members of the Commission. I just wanted to touch briefly on the fact that we have received correspondence letters on the winery ordinance, farm brewery ordinance, and the DIR component since the release of the DIR and also since release of the final DIR. And there's a handful of letters. We've reviewed those letters. There are a few letters from agencies, the rest are from members of the public. And, you know, my firm is focused on those which are related to the environmental document. And just to put it generally, we haven't found any comments that we haven't already addressed in the final DIR. In particular, a lot of the comments fall under the topics we addressed in the two master responses. And nothing that poses issues for the adequacy of the environmental analysis from our standpoint and careful review. In terms of any further specifics that or questions you may have, I'm more than happy to respond to those as we move through the presentation and your discussion.
I do have a question. This is probably more for Nikki, is on the last bullet point, do you have the specific language of how you're going to address that for us to see?
Yeah, that would be great.
Get the screen.
I do not, no. But we will hand this memo out. I'm going to read it into the record because...
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give you your...
Thank you.
So, for the benefit of those listening from home and for our commissioners also at home, I will read this into the record because it is not included in the staff report, and I will provide a copy after I finish this. So, this is staff-supported modifications dated April 23rd, 2020. Following the review of public correspondence received since February 13, 2020, Planning Commission meeting and a subsequent meeting with the Winery and Farm Brewery Task Force, staff is requesting that the commission consider two changes or refinements to the ordinance that support existing facilities and also ensure that the ordinance is more conducive to startup facilities while promoting the agriculture industry. These are numbered as additional refinements 16 and 17 and described below. So, number 16, which addresses this bullet point here that we just discussed, Planning Director determination, minimum parcel size disparity. It is, the direction is to add footnote, a footnote to Tables 2, 3, and 5 to allow the planning director to make a parcel-sized determination when the parcel is within a half acre of a sized reference in the tables. And so, some background, as noted in the memo, parcel sizes are determined by zoning designation of the property, net and gross calculations of the parcel, and applicable land conveyance documents. The following refinement is proposed in response to a comment letter received by Placer County Vittners Association. The following refinement is proposed in response to a comment letter received by Placer County Vintners Association on April 22nd, 2020, and correspondence from supporters of winery operations. The refinement allows the planning director to make a parcel size determination when parcels are within .5 acres of the minimum size referenced in table two pertaining to permit requirements for tasting rooms, table three pertaining to maximum special events allowed per year, and table five pertaining to distance required to attenuate noise impacts. The following footnote is proposed for tables two, three, and five. It reads, "Parcels within .5 acre of size referenced in this table that do not result in either a new significant environmental impact or a substantial increase in the severity of an impact, if categorized as a larger size, shall be subject to a planning director determination of the appropriate parcel size designation based upon, one, the actual size of the parcel, two, zoning designation of the property, and/or, three, applicable land conveyance documents." Uh, refinement 17, proposed before your commission today, is clarity on the state water standard as it applies to all operations, and the intent here is to streamline requirements for the public well by directly referencing state law. In a review of proposed Section E7 of the Development and Operational Standards pertaining to potable water and through a discussion with the Winery and Farm Brewery Task Force on the direction from the Planning Commission, this refinement is proposed to make the ordinance more user-friendly and streamlined as it pertains to referencing the statute rather than outlining components of the statute in the zoning text. Environmental Health Services staff applies California Code of Regulations Titles 17 and 22 of the California Safe Water Drink, Safe Drinking Water Act under the authority of the state of California law and can apply these standards in accordance with their policies and procedures. As it relates to the use of a residential well, it is important to note that those standards can be applied under the authority of the Environmental Health Services Division with or without an administrative review permit that was previously proposed. Additionally, including the statute by reference enables Environmental Health Services staff to apply the state law without amending Chapter 17 of the Placer County Code in the event that the law is amended or changed. So the following is proposed, subsection seven, Potable Water, A, reads, "Compliance with the California Code of Regulations Titles 17 and 22 of the California Safe Water Drinking Act." Safe Drinking Water Act shall be required.
And then.
See, I guess, uh, a question here, you know, just thinking about the expense of a well, um, I guess it'd be okay if a, a vintner wasn't ready to do that yet, they could actually buy potable water, like you can buy into these jugs and put them in your house, and I guess it's.
Well, I may have Environmental Health Services Division speak to this, bottled water is, isn't, um, isn't what they would require, so, um, it, it isn't uncommon, in fact, phasing operations to just start up and operate under a residential well is allowed and in fact has happened with some of our existing facilities. And so, uh, you know, Environmental Health Services Division works well with operators that once they exceed the threshold and need one, uh, then they would work with them to do that. But there are, um, operations that don't need one, and so a residential well can be used. Uh, it depends on the circumstance as far as how many days they're open and how many people are there and that kind of thing. If you have, so a residential well can be used.
Okay, and I was just thinking, you know, like, at your house, you know, some people live in areas where they don't really have potable water. They have a water delivery truck bring, uh, you know, a big bottle of water that they could set in a machine, and I guess that would, if that's, meets the state requirements, they could do that too, couldn't they? Is that correct?
Uh, I would probably defer to Environmental Health to answer that question, so if Danielle Pullman is on the phone.
Danielle, can you hear me?
We can, yeah. Did you hear Commissioner Johnson's question about using bottled water?
I did, yeah, and this is Danielle Pullman from Placer County Environmental Health. Um, unfortunately, there are, there are no exceptions to using bottled water, so if you are serving the public above that threshold, which was on Nikki's slide at one point, but just to reiterate, if you're serving 25 individuals daily at least 60 days out of the year, you have to have the, uh, public well and public water system and comply with the state requirement. So unfortunately, you can't serve bottled water in lieu of that.
Like I said, answers it. Thank you.
Nikki, um, number 16, parcel sizes are determined by zoning designation of the property, um, and net and gross calculations of the parcel, which is, is it net or gross?
So, uh, that, that's not how the footnote reads, right? That's my, that's a kind of explanation there. That's just to say that, um, typically, typically it is net.
I was going to say, I think we need to be specific and, and state that it's gross acreage because otherwise, in the instances that have kind of prompted us to look at this half acre of flexibility, half acre probably isn't enough if, if we're dealing with net acreage. So I, I think we need to be specific that it's, it's based on the gross acreage.
We can discuss that.
We can certainly include that in, I think, as staff's proposal for the footnote, you could include a gross, uh, gross, that, that language of using the term gross for parcel size.
Does that follow up? What, with the deed, when the deed defines it, what does it use?
So the way the proposed language is set up, I believe, right now, uh, it gives the planning director to, um, the authority to make that determination based on parcel size, um, the zoning, and any, uh, conveyance documents. So they would basically be looking at all three of those documents to make a determination as to what the appropriate designation should be. So it, it wouldn't necessarily be one or the other, it would just be kind of looking at it all together and, and figuring out, um, where it should fit. And that would only be for parcels within a half acre of the designation, designated size.
Yeah, Nikki, it may be worthwhile, I know we, we submitted these two changes to Nick Papani, our environmental consultant, uh, to review to see what the implications of such change are. And Nick, if you could speak to this, uh, briefly?
Absolutely, Nick Papani again with Rainy Planning and Management. Uh, I have reviewed these proposed changes, uh, with respect to the, uh, first proposed change, or at least on, on what I'm looking at here, given the, uh, planning director the discretion to determine where a particular, uh, property fits, if it's within a half acre of the, I'll say cutoff. Um, essentially, the language that's included there, in, in my opinion, is equivalent to a performance standard in, in that, um, in so making the determination one way or the other, uh, it, that cannot result in a new significant environmental impact or a substantial increase in the severity of an impact. And, and that may, you know, require, it would be up to the discretion of the director, uh, additional, uh, technical analysis, for example, uh, traffic study. And so with the language built in there, it's essentially equivalent to a performance standard, uh, we feel comfortable that that's adequate, doesn't affect the analysis that we've in, included, uh, or included in the environmental document. Um, the second component there with respect to the water standards, you know, that is essentially just referring to the applicable section of the state law. It's not loosening any, you know, any language that was previously included in the zoning text amendment, and it's simply just, uh, streamlining, if you will, the ordinance and pointing to the applicable state law. So again, without loosening any requirements there, we're comfortable in, in that proposed change. Thank you.
So, um, that, that brings us to the recommendation here, and I might need a little support from, um, counsel on this one as far as how to bring forward, uh, the, the memo in, in, um, in, uh, commission's action. But the recommendation is here above, above you on the screen as far as the, uh, action to recommend to the Board of Supervisors. I, I'm not going to read it, but it pertains to certification of the, uh, Winery and Farm Brewery Zoning Text Amendment Project Final EIR, as well as adoption of the ordinance to amend, um, the zoning ordinance. Uh, and, and that is, of course, supported by findings contained in the staff report.
Thank you, Nikki. Um, I, I don't know if there's anything else we need to hear from the folks on the phone. Um, and if there's no other discussion, I'd like to open public comment at this point. Are you okay with that? Okay. Uh, looks like Larry was talking, but, um, not sure. Okay, so, okay, he's saying that. So let's go ahead and open up public comment and start to move through. Do you know how many we have so far on the line? Okay, let, let me just read the phone number again, since we're moving into the public comment phase. Um, just as a reminder, 530-886-1800 is the number to call in for this agenda item. And we'll go ahead and start with our first public comment person.
I would just like to note that I think there's a maximum of 20 callers in at a time, and, uh, in the event that we get over that, people may get a busy signal or may get disconnected, and I would just encourage them to call back in because there will be callers that will be getting cleared from the queue, so it will free up more room.
Yeah, thank you, counsel, and we'll, we'll do pauses, I think even after S-folks drop off, we'll pause to make sure people can get caught up. So please, please, call in if you'd like to make a public comment and we will hear you.
Good afternoon, you're live in the hearing room, please state your name for the record.
Uh, Phil Maddox.
Thank you, go ahead.
I don't, I'm, I'm noticing it's not time for public comment yet. Okay. Am I the first to make?
Yeah, Phil, you're, you're, you're with us now live in the Planning Commission, you're in the public comment phase, it just started.
Okay, so this is, this is when I have a chance to make comments?
That's right.
Okay. Um, well, good afternoon, uh, planning commissioners, my name is Phil Maddox, I'm the owner of Lone Buffalo Vineyards, um, and I want to first of all mention that since the last hearing, we have spent a lot of time with planning staff and pretty much resolved all of the Placer County Vintners Association's, um, concerns with the draft ordinance. Um, with, we had three. The first was change in minimum parcel size for tasting rooms allowed by right, and as I think, uh, Nikki has already indicated, there's been a change in that ordinance, or that part of the ordinance to, in, in parcels between 4.6 and 10 acres, so that it would no longer require a minor use permit, but that change would be, uh, that would be changed to an administrative review permit. And the, the Placer County Vintners Association is fine with that. Uh, the other concern we had was concerning access standards. We've had a lot of, of comments and discussions with the planning department. Um, we're pretty comfortable with what's going on right now, except that we do have, uh, one remaining concern, and I would reference, uh, the letter that the PCBA sent to the board, uh, to, rather, to the Planning Commission on this matter, and that would be, there was a provision in the previous ordinance, in the existing ordinance right now, that allows a little bit more flexibility, and we would like flexibility to be part of the codification. And I'm referring specifically to, uh, the language that, uh, basically reads as follows, "Access roads to winery structures shall meet state and local fire safe standards as determined by the serving fire agency. Alternative design allowances and/or requirements may be determined on a case-to-case basis for modifications to the standards, dependent upon anticipated level of use, site constraints, turnout opportunities, road length, slope, and other site-specific issues." We believe if this language was allowed, it would codify the flexibility that the Planning Commission has indicated that they will exercise. Uh, the other concern that we had was about existing operations or existing wineries, and, um, we have had several discussions about that. Um, my understanding that the current draft ordinance being presented to the board satisfies pretty much all of our concerns. I'm a little puzzled why this particular issue doesn't seem to be addressed in the staff report, but we have certainly included it in our letter, uh, and I ask that certainly the commissioners read this letter. The problem with the changes that have been made is that they reference minor use permits and, and, uh, minor use permits and, um, administrative permits, and the problem we have with the existing wineries is that because when, prior to the ordinance and as these wineries came into effect, county was rather, um, there was no basic, uh, operational plan, and so some people have permits of one kind or another, some don't. There are wineries that have been operating.
Mr. Maddox, your time, your time is up.
For a long time, with really no formal written permits. Uh, so we have proposed a simple addition to the language that would refer not only to use permits, but to existing operations pursuant to a valid business license. And we think this would, would solve that problem. Um, and basically, the, with, with those additions, uh, at least I can certainly speak for Lone Buffalo Vineyards and, uh, generally for the, the members of the Placer County Vintners Association, we feel that the ordinance as proposed is pretty much acceptable with a few, uh, additions that we've, uh, referenced.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maddox, thank you for those comments. We'll go to the next public comment.
And Sue, if you could remind them to turn their streaming device off or the volume down. Thank you.
Good afternoon, you're live in the hearing room, please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes, and we ask that you turn off your viewing device, turn off the volume, please.
I did, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Jackie Hoyt, and I'm a 25-year resident of, of Granite Bay. For transparency in the decision-making process, please provide the specific statute or authority that supports violation, violating CECLAS Public Resource Code 21000. By analyzing only a portion of the county lease, lessing the cumulative environmental impact, it is, it is fairly argued that proposed, that the proposed final EIR directly violates CECLAS. My other point is, the proposed ordinance will create a nuisance as defined by California Civil Code for residents living nearby interfering with the quality and comfortable enjoyment of our life. This ordinance will permit wineries to operate commercial event centers by allowing unlimited events to be held in conflict with accessory use and underlying zoning. I live directly to the west of the proposed CEW winery project, which was not included in the winery brewery final EIR. The ordinance gives no enforceable definition for temporary outdoor events and does not restrict amplified sound or music in violation of noise ordinance. This will place an undue hardship on many of us within a residentially zoned district and thought we zone our agri, residential agricultural zone into a commercial zone at our expense without means to enforce negative impact. I also request the definition of allowed events and the specific method of calculate, calculations being used to analyze impact for, of traffic, public services, sewage, noise, light, cumulatively, for unlimited events. The math seems particularly impossible, one would have to assume the maximum of infinity to fully estimate that fact, which is outrageous. Sorry about that word. Further, I'm outraged at the complete disregard of public input and current legal statutes. I'm requesting that Mr., Mr. Valdi, as the planning director, pursuant to 1702040, provides his finding. findings of substantial conformance that there is a clear and enforceable distinction between a commercial event center and unlimited events of 50 or fewer at any. This definition appears to be identical, and it is conflict of underlying zones. The public routinely asks for information and is met with silence. At this time, there are an excess of 1,000 residents formally requesting this input with an untold number that have questioned the county's arrogance, silence, and disregard for state and local laws. I request a continuance based on a legal professional code, the California Bar Code of Conduct mandates that the public protection is paramount. I'd like to ask the Planning Commission to request opinion from the council, county council, as to how three legal letters pointing out that they have segmented the WB ordinance, including the SEAR project, which is immediately adjacent to my parcel, is able to proceed a full knowledge that is required to be evaluated cumulatively with all active CECLAS projects. Please provide your actions, please consider your actions today, and request a continuance until the final EIR takes into account all environmental accounts, impacts, definition as clear and enforceable.
Ms. Hoyt.
And for your record, I will email my comments to be included as part of the administrative records. That's all I got for now.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Do you think it's helpful if I tell them they have one minute?
Good afternoon, you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record and lower the volume on your listening device.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman Howdy, Secretary Herzog, and distinguished members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rob Haswell. I am the CEO of the Placer County Visitors Bureau, Visit Placer, and I live at 1630 Berlin Way in Auburn. I'm commenting today in support of the amended language to the update of the Winery and Farm Brewery Zoning Text Amendment. Placer County's growing wine and ale industry is fast becoming a major asset to our economy. I support the current update that staff has moved forward because it fundamentally balances the rural and agricultural nature of Placer County's foothills with flexibility that allows the region to grow responsibly and encourages small, family-owned operations to move forward while also accommodating potentially larger operations that fill a different sector of the market. I would encourage, however, that you consider, that the commission consider looking at some of the suggested language that the Placer County Vintner Association has proposed to further clarify the organization's concerns relating to non-conforming use or the grandfather clause. As the pioneers who carved the path and established this industry when the guidance was far more undefined, I believe they deserve extra consideration to mitigate their concerns regarding the status going forward of their existing operations. In closing, I'll say this, as our nation and state and country eventually emerge from the health and economic devastation we are all experiencing as a result of the current worldwide pandemic, it would be crucial that we have policies in place that will facilitate business recovery, growth, and economic expansion while preserving the quality of life that is a major differentiator for Placer County. Fallout from the COVID-19 pandemic will last for years, if not decades. I believe a strong, well-defined, yet flexible ordinance that balances agricultural and rural preservation with forward-thinking economic growth, such as the one you are considering, will help facilitate this recovery. Thank you for hearing me today, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, you're live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record, turn off your listening device, and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Tina Wilkins from Vigna Castiano Winery in North Auburn. I just want to kind of reiterate what some of the other people are saying, and that just asking you to please support the changes that we've worked with, the, with the Planning Department, to get on behalf of the wineries. I want to specifically address the new thing that we brought up regarding the parcels that are just under 20 acres. There's two of us, but specifically talking about parcels that are like ours. There's a lot of them in the farm zones that, why, people have either given easement to neighbors, or regardless of why, they fall just under that 20 or 10-acre minimum. And I would suggest that rather than it going to allow the planning, you know, kind of arbitrarily look at everything and make those decisions, that we just change the language to read 19 acres and 10 acres. There's some precedent for it in that, that the five-acre parcels that were, that was the requirement in the act of, in the minimum requirement, and we are allowed to do 4.6 acres, which I think was for county right of way or something of that nature. But anyway, if we do the same with these larger parcels, that kind of eliminates the issue that could be out there on future projects. Because there, like I said, there's a lot of historical reasons in the letter that we drafted. So I would request that the, that we change the language so that it does that and doesn't put a further burden on us. That has a substantial effect on those of us who are, I'm 19, 18.8 acres, but I have a lot of grapes planted, and I want the extra to be able to sell my wine based as a 20-acre parcel, because for all intents and purposes, that's what I am. And again, just ask you to please support us. We've worked arduously with the county over the last several years to try to get to a place where we can be a viable industry. So thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Good afternoon, you are live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes, and turn the volume down on your listening device, please.
Carrie M. P. T.
Please turn the sound down on your listening device, and you, please go ahead.
Hello, this is Keith Hazen and Carrie Hazen. We're here with Ranch Row Blay Vineyards and Wineries out here in Lincoln. Just want to share a few comments, first of which, to the Planning Commissioner and the county planning staff and all those involved, we want to express our appreciation for the collaborative process that we've gone through. We are a part of this community over the last couple of years. We've been in the Auburn area for the last 35 years, and we're really excited to be a part of this overall region. It's an amazing opportunity here to participate in a family-owned business and growing agriculture and connecting with communities through our winery. We do want to emphasize, there's been a lot of thought put into some of the language related to the adjustments under consideration. To follow on with Tina's point that she made, we also believe it's very important to provide some flexibility in terms of the acreage. Now, we happen to sit on a 20-acre plot, rounded by 100-acre plots, and due to easement, it's recorded as a 19.73 acre plot, and, you know, feasible to apply the necessary variability to that, you know, really relates to common sense in support of, you know, supporting communities and the efforts we have.
And this is Carrie Hazen, and I would like to personally thank the Planning Commissioners for taking the time to talk. We have an incredible planning department, so thank you so much, and, or the Planning Department for looking at this additional footnote. One thing that I just want to bring up that will frighten me to me is having the footnote that it's in the discretionary of the planning director, and that's why I'd like to confer with Tina. Although it's a great idea, and I love it, and I love the performance case, I've just been wondering the logistics of how that actually would happen, how many meetings, what we'd have to go through, as we've been working for two years trying to get this, our bathroom's ready to go for the county. It is a little more difficult than it seems on paper, as we were noting all the different ordinances that, or the codes that the state and the federal and ABC and county have in place. Finally, I just wanted to state this decision will make a big difference in our situation right now. We have stopped a project that we were getting ready to do based on your decision and based on this half-acre variance or modification. And we would really like to have clarity so we could continue this project during this downturn of COVID-19. Thank you very much, and we really appreciate all that you are doing for Placer County. And I can't wait for my grandson Everett to be one of the Planning Commissioners someday in Placer County.
All right, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Hazen.
Good afternoon, you are live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes, and we'd appreciate it if you'd turn off your listening device.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Mary Jasper, Public Interest Coalition. We are not opposed to wineries, breweries, or tasting rooms, but we are opposed to unlimited events and their being spun as an agricultural activity, often referenced by right. In rural residential ag and farm zones, events are incompatible, if not non-conforming, ag land uses. They are not agriculture, they never have been, and that's why permits are needed. But, under permit conditions, unless they are clear and enforceable, events do indeed create the unacceptable significant impacts on neighbors, which, along with conflicts, is, have been the problem. It's that unenforceable, vague event language that's one of the many ZTA problems. The 350-page staff report received Friday proposes changes that create new significant impacts, which will require CECLAS analysis, mitigation, and EIR recirculation. For example, in five zone districts, proposed requirements for permits are greatly reduced at lower levels of review. These kinds of changes are problematic because an ARP review does not provide public notice or include a public hearing. That makes it difficult for neighbors or the public to be informed or to participate. Another example, for the already unacceptable unlimited events, up to 50 people, it's proposed to exclude, in other words, don't count any patrons who are in the tasting rooms. Oh my gosh. This absurd proposal renders the less than 50 people requirement for unlimited events totally unenforceable. Because the ZTA is such a convoluted mess, and the EIR is fatally flawed, it all needs to start over. And the next revision needs to be of, for, and by the people, meaning rural residents in ag and farm zones, not just of, by, and for the commercial industries. County outreach is not the same as input. Just a couple more things. At the Lincoln, at a Lincoln Mac meeting on this topic, when staff mentioned sheriff would enforce the member of the events or after hours, the deputy immediately and firmly interrupted and said, "We do not do code compliance. They do do noise if they have no other important calls ahead of it." And with regard to refinement number 16, the half-acre flexibility, please be sure to state actual, average, sorry, acreage size, the number of acres where the planning director would have the discretion. Otherwise, if you just say large, or gross, or net, but not name the number, that is way too loose and subject to abuse and frankly biased decisions. And last, relative impacts from transportation being called significant and unavoidable is not quite accurate, in our opinion. Transportation in that large area could be reduced, the impacts from the events, by simply strictly reducing the number of events and attendees at any winery within, say, a five, seven, or 10-mile radius of that intersection until the light or the roundabout or the barrier is constructed. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
They're trying to call back somehow. They disconnected. Not when they're calling on birth, because the queue could be 20 people deep. I can't do anything till they transfer a line, Arthur. No, there, I was just asking for another one. Good afternoon, you are live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes, and we'd appreciate it if you turned the sound off on your listening device.
Hey, this is Mark Brown. I submitted a letter, and I'm not sure all the commissioners have a chance to read it. I'm really calling on one point, and it's the two-acre requirement. I've got a pretty high-density planting that I'm planning on doing, six feet by four feet, that comes out to 1,815 vines in one acre. I've really only got one acre of suitable space on the 4.7 acre property. So I'm going above and beyond in terms of planting density. And for perspective, there's an 80-year-old mission grape vineyard here in Placer County with like 10 spacing. That's 436 vines per acre. So I'm really concerned that by putting two acres on site, that cuts me out of the equation. I've got 4.7 acres, I could certainly plant two acres of vines, but it's not in the interest of quality to do so. I think that some of these provisions are fundamentally anti-competitive and, you know, bordering on antagonistic to this upstart. And I just don't want to get crowded out of this. I think that there's room for growth in the future for Placer County wines, and in a way, this is getting very prescriptive on how that should happen. I know this has been taking up a lot of the commission's time, but I also have a concern that there's no person on the post for Agriculture Commissioner's Office with representation for the winery and farm brewery industry. That post is currently vacant, so all of this is sort of...
ordinance to meet the balanced needs of the community. We would like to recognize the staff's willingness to listen, take comments, show patience at times, and make the necessary changes to the ordinance. As such, we support the proposed ordinance amendment and its proposed changes identified in the latest staff report. We appreciate the tremendous amount of time that you, your staff, and the community have put into this effort, and ask that you end the uncertainty that would be caused by postponing approval of this ordinance. We respectfully request that you vote to recommend approval and send it to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. You are live in the hearing room. We'd ask that you please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes, and please turn off your listening device.
Thank you. My name is Cheryl Burkema. I first wanted to echo that I agree with Marilyn Jasper that the general community supports ag events and supports ag wineries, rather, and promotion of ag, but the events are a problem. Also, I'd like to echo her concern about not providing public input. All of these last-minute vintners' associations, I personally have gone to almost every MAC in my area, and I heard one presentation recently, almost a year ago, and our input was not taken. We're not part of any task forces. Our supervisor didn't even invite us to any workshops, so I do think there hasn't been enough public input. But also, I find it incredible that there's a memo at the last minute, and currently, with the COVID-19, there have been no revisions and no accounting for the impacts of COVID-19. No health mentions of services, so hospitals, medical response teams, food service, what restaurants are going to look like. We live in a different world today. Yet, we can accommodate the vendors at the last minute, but we have nothing for the past six weeks. We've been sheltering in place, and we have nothing to even mention that. The addition of for traffic impacts and impacts of any new wineries, Sunset Area was already in progress. We don't see any of the impacts. We don't see any greenhouse gas emissions being mentioned from the Bay Area all the way through to Tahoe, pretending that none of these wineries are going to impact traffic whatsoever. Also, the statement of overriding considerations, states basically that the significant impacts are outweighed by the advantages, and I would challenge that because you haven't included all the impacts, so you can't look at the cumulative effect. Also, I wanted to mention that the PCPTA, so any of the mitigations that has not been put on the ballot, so anything, we already have concerns with road improvements, and how is that going to affect the rest of unincorporated Placer County? I don't think that's been adequately addressed. Neither has the PCCP, has not been approved, and so we don't know what, if any, impacts. So, I think there's islands of piecemeal development happening, but none of the known impacts from other projects are being included with these. I think that the staff report concluded that they don't expect any new wineries or breweries, but yet all the applications are not included. I requested, and Nikki said she'd provide those, but that should have been known and have been a part of that. The memo is actually a Brown Act violation, as well as I heard a couple other new things. As Marilyn suggested, coming up the Friday before and plopping down a bunch of new requests is not adequate. The EIR should be redeveloped and recirculated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I believe that's the last public comment in the queue. What I'd like to do is wait a minute, just see if the public gets caught up with our delay. Just wait a minute before I close the public comment. That number is 530-886-1800, and would like to encourage you, if you've experienced a busy line, this might be a good time to try to call again.
I would just add, the delay, the longer someone is watching on home, if they've been watching since the beginning of this meeting, the delay might be even longer, so we may take an extra minute just to recognize that. I don't have a timeframe, but it could be longer than a minute. We should also recognize that there are 20 hold lines, so if there were people queued up as well, right? Right?
Well, at this point, I'm going to close public comment if the commission's okay with that. And with respect to technology, if we have more public that comes in in a moment, we can address that. But I'd like to invite Nikki, staff backup, to address maybe some of the comments that were made by the public, and then commissioners, feel free to engage with your comments and questions during this.
Sure. Are there specific comments that you want me to address, anything specific?
Well, I can turn it to the commissioners, too. If anything was brought up by the public, public comment that you would like?
Yeah, I have some.
Okay.
Okay. The question I have was with regards to the access, and if I can find it here. I'm kind of puzzling what the Vintners Association was really dealing with, and at any rate, I'm not finding it real fast, but basically, I think what their proposed language is doing is pretty much saying the same thing as the current ordinance proposal says, but it eliminates some of the more specific suggestions in that. And I'm kind of wondering what's the problem there, because, you know, the county code on that is pretty clear, and the state code is pretty clear, and the fire marshal, when he's reviewing the road access, is going to know those factors. And so, I'm wondering why our proposed ordinance has to be so specific, I guess, on those items.
Sure, I can speak to that. So, the provision that was read by our first commenter, as far as citing those specific elements, you know, we believe there is flexibility built in to make determinations on each of those elements that were mentioned. And so, I think it is correct that that defers to the local fire-serving district for the driveway access to the structured facility. Those are two different things, right? There's an encroachment permit that's required to address where the roadway access touches the county-maintained road, and then there's the access to the facility. And so, in both of those, in the county's interpretation of both of those, there is flexibility built in, whether through the determination made by the local fire-serving district or through a design exception process.
I guess what I'm wondering, you know, just off the top of my head, you're talking about a 20-foot width, adequate turnouts, and there's one other fire, yeah, turnaround at the end for the fire trucks. So, the surface has to be able to support a fire truck. And so, you know, those factors, the person from the fire marshal should know those factors.
Correct.
And so, by including those factors in the zoning text, it makes it sound like they're, I wouldn't call it arbitrary, but they're mandatory, where, you know, the fire marshal probably could make some judgments there that, as far as turnaround and whether it could carry a fire truck, and whether the width is there, you know? If there's one place where it's 19 feet wide instead of 20 feet wide, is that a problem or not, type of thing? And so, by being very prescriptive there, I'm wondering if that's really necessary to be in this, because the fire marshal's going to know the county and the state codes. And I think that's the main difference, as far as I can tell. So, I guess I would recommend that you take the prescriptive items out, or just use their wording, and go with their recognizance that there's flexibility for the fire marshal.
So, you're good with the language that they suggest as an alternative?
Yeah, I'm good with their alternative language myself, and I think that's all it really does, is take out those prescriptive items.
So, I'll just read from that code section, unless otherwise determined by the fire-serving district. So, that language was actually the part that staff brought back to just say, "We defer to the local fire-serving district as it relates to access to the facility structure." Our position is that this provision does allow flexibility to make determinations on turnarounds and those kinds of things.
Okay. Well, my question is, why are we getting more prescriptive in the statement then?
We are not. I believe the Vintners Association proposed language cites each of those things, but I believe it's the Vintners Association letter that cites those things. Ours reads, "Access roads to a winery or farm brewery shall comply with county code, state, and local fire safe standards as determined by the county and the serving fire district. Unless otherwise determined by the serving fire district, driveway shall have a minimum access width of 20 feet to the facility structure, provide adequate turnaround, and be either paved or surfaced with an approved alternative all-weather material." So, unless otherwise determined, we defer to the fire-serving district based on that language.
Okay. We're probably talking about miniscule things here, but at any rate, apparently, the prescriptive items were a problem for the Vintners Association, so at any rate, I don't know exactly why they have to be in there.
I would say this is not prescriptive.
What's that?
This is not prescriptive, what's written in our proposal. It defers to what the local fire-serving district determines.
Okay. Well, you can convince them of that. That's right.
So, you don't think there, Nikki, you don't think, just following on Rich's comments, that it's necessary to modify that language to what the Vintners are suggesting? You don't think it's necessary?
No.
You don't think it's necessary?
No, I mean, it could end up in a less restrictive or a more restrictive requirement depending on the fire district, right?
It could.
But what it does is allow flexibility, and, you know, it's not one-size-fits-all, as we know, for each of these wineries, so to build in that flexibility, but assure that, you know, the required access and safety is in place. I think that's what's important.
I'm sorry, Rich, did you have more questions?
No, I guess, go ahead. I have another point, or another thing I want to talk about, but we can talk about this.
What I wanted, I just want to pass along that I am really impressed with how much progress you've made in the short period of time since our last meeting on this, and how much flexibility you've built in, because as you just said, one size does not fit all in these categories, so we have to build in some flexibility, and I think you've done an excellent job of doing that. So, the only other thing that I was going to ask is they made, not only the question as far as what we just discussed, but there was another issue that they brought up where they suggested language change, and I was going to ask you what you thought about that.
Well, I was going to bring that one up.
Are you going to bring it up?
Yeah.
Then you go ahead, Rich.
I guess the county's implementation of the ordinance, the ordinance that's being modified, I guess it was developed in 2008, if I remember right, or sometime around there. But at any rate, there's reference to a minor use permit and an administrative use permit, and the problem that some of the Vintners are going to run into is they've been operating now with the county's approval under a business plan, or business license. And so, the criteria that they're operating under, I guess, would be that maybe the 2008 document, but, you know, they just have a business plan. And so, at any rate, I think that's what the Vintners are addressing, is that some of these people that may not have a written document that's got conditions written into it, though they understand what the 2008 document included, are they, I mean, how do you determine that they are grandfathered in? I mean, what, you know, they don't really have criteria other than the 2008 ordinance.
Yes.
So, how do you determine if they're grandfathered?
Right.
And that's what they would worry about, I think, you know? I mean, I don't have anything, so how can I be grandfathered?
So, I think what you're asking is what exercise is a use when it's allowed by right?
Yeah.
Right? When there is not a use permit, there's not an entitlement, there's not that insurance policy that you have saying you're entitled to use. It's simply allowed by right, by zoning clearance. We have a lot of uses like that. They are ministerial. They do not require discretion. And so, in these instances, what exercises that use is a building permit or a business license, and/or a building license. So, if they have those things, and they reflect what is in the 2008 ordinance, the current ordinance, then they continue to be allowed to operate legally, so long as they have those things, the business license and/or the building permit. And I'll turn to council if they have more to add.
Yeah, and I can just add a little bit to that. Any use that they're allowed by right as of now, they would still be allowed as of the date that the zoning ordinance gets updated, if it does get updated. So, they would still be allowed all that stuff by right from that point in time. That's the legal nonconforming use that you've heard about. So, if they are doing an operation that is legally permissible right now, and is in conformance with the requirements now, the adoption of a zoning text amendment won't change that. They'll still be allowed to do all of that same stuff. Now, if they modify the use, or change things, or want to take advantage of any of the new benefits included in the new ordinance language, then they are now subject to the requirements in the new ordinance language. So, nothing changes for them as long as they kind of keep the same path, assuming that they have a legally permissible use as of today's date. If they were doing something that would be considered illegal under the county's current zoning ordinance, that is not somehow allowed as of the date that the new ordinance is adopted, if it is adopted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense to me. I guess where I'm struggling is the item F on page 13. Makes reference to the extent a minor use permit or administrative review permit was approved for uses on the parcel.
date that the zoning ordinance gets updated, if it does get updated. So, they would still be allowed all that stuff by right from that point in time. That's the legal non-conforming use that you've heard about. So, if they are doing an operation that is legally permissible right now and is in conformance with the requirements now, the adoption of a zoning text amendment won't change that. They'll still be allowed to do all of that same stuff. Now, if they modify the use or change things or want to take advantage of any of the new benefits included in the new ordinance language, then they are now subject to the requirements in the new ordinance language. So, nothing changes for them as long as they kind of keep the same path, assuming that they have a legally permissible use as of today's date. If they were doing something that would be considered illegal under the county's current zoning ordinance, that is not somehow allowed as of the date that the new ordinance is adopted, if it is adopted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense to me. I guess where I'm struggling is the item F on page 13. Makes reference to the extent a minor use permit or administrative review permit was approved for uses on the parcel as required under this, in effect of, you know, that wording there doesn't seem to really address somebody that's just got a business license. And I think that was the proposal that the Vintners Association was making.
Commissioner Johnson, could you just refer me again to where you were pointing in the staff report?
What's that?
Could you just refer me again to where you were looking in the staff report? Page 13?
Oh, it's, well, it's page 118, I guess, and something. Let's see, zoning text, alternative, I mean, it's attachment C.
The small red number on the bottom of the page?
Yeah, the small red number's 118.
118.
Or 1, 1, yeah, 118. And it's item F.
Yeah, so I believe that reiterates basically what I was saying in that anything that was allowed before would continue to be, continue to apply in full force and effect. Any proposed newer additional use would be subject to compliance with the new zoning ordinance.
Yeah, it's got that sense, and they're talking about the extent a minor use permit or administrative review permit was approved, and in a lot of cases, it's just a business
So, there may be, you may have instances where there is no entitlement for an existing operation, which Clayton explained, those non-conforming uses. You may have an existing operation that has an entitlement, whether it's an administrative review permit or a conditional use permit. So, for those that are existing right now, they would still need to be in compliance with all the conditions of their administrative review permit or whatever other entitlement. So, if they aren't in compliance today, they would still have to be in compliance. And I think, you know, in our discussions, I think there was asked that they be grandfathered into this ordinance, and we're not in support of that if they, if there are certain wineries that are not in conformance with their existing conditions. So, that was one of the asks that was made of us. We're not supporting that. However, if you do have an existing permit and you are in compliance, then you could operate under that even with the adoption of the new ordinance.
Yeah, I guess that's not answering the question, though, that, that I guess, like, we're talking about by right, some of these, I guess, were by right before, and so, all they have is a business license. And so, are they okay to go?
As long as they're operating under the provisions of that business license, I would say yes, if Clayton wants to add to that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think I get what you're saying. Yes, if they don't have a permit and their use is allowed by right, that would continue, that would, that right would still exist if a new ordinance was adopted. I think you're right, though, in the language here, it just does refer only to permits.
Yeah.
But the legal non-conforming use applies, and the section in the county code applies to uses by right as well. So, that would, it's still covered in the county code that they're, if they have a by-right allowance, that that would still be allowed after the fact, based on that non-conforming use statute and common law for non-conforming uses as well.
Okay, well, I think that answers it, but if you're a Vintner and you've been operating for five or six years under a business license, and somebody comes out and says, "Well, this is what it says," and you don't have that, then, then they have to go to somebody. I guess you have to talk to you to see how they can get that answered.
Right, so, just because they have a business license doesn't necessarily mean that they are in compliance with current winery code requirements. So, I guess there is a little bit of a differentiation there. If, it may be that they are allowed by right.
Okay, you're talking about, you're talking about the 2008.
The one that's in existence right now, right?
Okay.
So, that's why I'm saying, yeah, by itself, the business license isn't enough to verify that you're in conformance with the county code, so. But if they are allowed it by right, then they still would be allowed it by right.
I guess that's where the word, okay, well, I don't know, I don't know how to reword it, so it's up to you guys if it needs to be reworded or not. Let me see, the other, maybe other issue that I was thinking about, and, you know, I am appreciative of the fact that some of the folks, you know, have 20, they bought a parcel and they thought it was 20 acres, then they found out it was, you know, a portion of an acre, less than 20 acres, when it actually was surveyed, like we found out in this case. And so, at any rate, I think what you're saying, and I think, I think it's okay, you know, the solution seems to be a little wordy. You know, I would have just said 9.5 acre, I mean, if you have 19.5 acres, that's okay, but the standard is 20 acres, you know? And I kind of go by the, at least my understanding of the farm zone is actually five acres, but recognizing, you know, the county easements and other types of things that happened over the years, surveying mistakes, that actually the county says, "Well, if you have 4.6 acres, and that qualifies for a farm zone." So, I guess what I was hearing earlier, I think it sounds like to meet the environmental document, it has to be a determination on the part of the planning director, but at any rate, I probably would have made that a little simpler.
Sure, and it doesn't necessarily need to be the planning director, I think that's what staff's proposing, but certainly up to the commission if they want to make a different recommendation. There is a concern, though, with this, that if you reduce it from the numbers that were originally anticipated, that you potentially open up more environmental impacts. So, this winery ordinance was evaluated with those thresholds, and so, that's why there is some language in the proposed language that talks about, as long as there's not significant impacts that result from evaluating that. That's because, that's in order to just make sure that we're not running astray of the environmental review that's already been done for this ordinance. But in terms of how you evaluate it, what you look at, I mean, that's, I think, all fair game for separate planning commission recommendations, if you want to provide those.
Yeah, well, you know, as far as the planning director making a determination, I think that would be fine, and in terms of significant environmental impacts, I guess we have to do that in terms of the environmental document. But some of the other wording, I don't know if that's really necessary to get in and actually do a detailed analysis of why this is a smaller acreage and that kind of stuff, but, so I guess I would stop at the environmental impact or substantial increases in the severity of the impact.
I think I'm okay with the language, just because that's going to be all part of the evaluation of the situation. I mean, they're going to have to do that anyway to look at it, so I always would opt for shorter versions of things anyway, I agree with you on that, but I think this is all something that has to be completed anyway when they look at it.
I don't really object to, though, to tell you the truth. I think the people that are concerned about this would be satisfied at the fact that we came up with a 9.5.
Well.
Or 19.5.
Yeah, well, my, I really think that I would prefer that we keep the basis the way it is, but build in the flexibility that this additional language gives. That's my point.
Yeah, I guess, are you?
I'm saying that we need to keep the 20 and the 10 and the 4.6. We shouldn't be changing those numbers.
Oh, I agree with that.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that, you know, I think this addresses the issue that we've got, and I think that what Clayton is saying is if we start changing those numbers, the 20, the 10, and the 4.6, then, then it starts to impact the environmental report.
Yeah, I was thinking earlier that you want to keep the 20 and the 10 and the 4.6, but footnote it, like it's footnoted here, I guess, I was looking at the wordiness of this and wondering if we needed to be so wordy, but I'm okay with the wordiness it is.
So am I. On both of those, both 16 and 17.
So, Chairman, we've been, we've been having a discussion here for some time since we've closed public comment. Several minutes have gone by. We do have one other person who is on the call line, if you do want to consider that, and then, and then after that, possibly close public.
Yeah, I'd like to open up public comment again and listen to the one caller, if you guys are okay with the one.
Just one.
Okay, we'll do the one, and then we won't open again.
Yeah, I think significant time has gone by, so if anybody was going to call in, that we would have heard from them by now.
Okay. But let's, are you guys okay if we go to the caller right now? I think we have some more comments that want to be made, so, okay, we'll put on the caller.
You are live in the hearing room. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes, and please turn the volume down on your listening device.
My name is Rock Plum from Granite Bay, California, and I just want to respond to the ordinance for the winery brewery and want to support small wineries, especially Rachel Roble, who I love. I love their Barbara, I love all the things that they do and the way they represent our community, but also Vina Castellano and other small wineries, so that they could, so that they could have more events, and of course, that would have a positive impact on their bottom line, but also it would create more revenue for their counties. So, I just wanted to call and support that. I love everything they do, and I hope you're able to make an exception here and allow them to grow their business in a way that they can stay in business and stay profitable. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Plum. I'm going to close public comment again and then bring it back to the commission.
Okay, I have one more question, maybe, if I could. Oh, one quick as well. I see I have a question with regards to, earlier you indicated, you indicated that a person could produce wine and that without, without a permit, apparently. And so, is that, if they just have one acre, can they produce wine without a permit?
As they can today, production is allowed on properties that are 4.6 acres, 4.6 acre minimum. So, it's allowed by right, and that will continue to be allowed by right. If they come in after the proposed ordinance is adopted, then they would be required to meet that ag minimum. So, I believe there was a commenter who noted the agricultural minimum increase from one to two acres could be a burden of some sort, but that, again, is a determination that our agricultural commission has weighed in on, saying, "Hey, we want to see more grape growing in this county, we want to see crop production really being the foundational use here," and so, that is why that threshold was met, in order to meet general plan policy for protecting and preserving agriculture and the like. Could somebody make, you know, make wine as a home winemaker and grow grapes and do that kind of thing? Absolutely, right? We don't regulate that. But if a commercial winery wants to come in, you want to commercially sell it with your ABC license, you know, your type 2 ABC license, then yes, the ag minimum would need to be met, but it is allowed by right so long as you meet that standard.
Okay, well, I think you answered Mr. Brown's question. Okay, thank you.
Sheriff, if I could, too, on a somewhat unrelated topic, there was a mention about potential Brown Act violation. I just, I would like to just make a comment about that briefly, if that's okay.
Please do.
So, there was a comment about the memo that staff had provided to the commissioners and an assertion that that would be a Brown Act violation. Under the Brown Act, specifically at government code section 549, 57.5, is as long as a memo is provided to the public at the same time it's provided to the commission, it's not in violation of the Brown Act. So, your commission did receive that memo today during the meeting, it is also now publicly available, and it was read in the record, so there is not a violation of the Brown Act in the way that that was provided. Oh, and one other thing, there was also a mention about staff reports being provided late. The, I checked, the staff report and agenda was posted on April 16th, which was a week ago. The requirement under the Brown Act is a 72-hour posting beforehand, so it's well in compliance with that as well.
Nikki, could you go back a few slides? I think it's in the high 50. Let's see if I saw this correctly. Keep going, one, right there. So, we've got several criterias for agricultural promotional events, less than 50 people and more than 50. And I guess, in an attempt to keep things simple, enforceable, to minimize feuds between neighbors due to misunderstandings and what have you, I don't know what difference it makes, whether it's a birthday party or a winemaker dinner, has to 15 people difference in allowance to attend. I think it puts into question what the type of event is for neighbors trying to monitor and, and be part of it and make sure that things are falling, you know, into place and being followed by the rules, that it just, it complicates things a whole bunch. And I think it would be just much simpler if we had agricultural and promotional events, less than 50 people, period, and special events, more than 50 attendees, period. And it doesn't make any difference whether it's a fundraiser or a wedding or a birthday party or a wine pickup dinner as to how many people you can have. I think it'll take a lot of problems off the board in the future. Would suggest that we consider that. The other one, if you could, please, go to 62. So, the private road, again, to me, this is kind of a disaster waiting for, waiting to happen. Proof of access rights, period. If we go in and have them have to have a vote of everybody who has the use of that road that doesn't exist today, I think we're opening a can of worms, you know, for lots of civil issues between neighbors and what have you. If you have a right to use the road, you have a right to use the road. For the county to insert a voting privilege to the neighbors in there that does not exist, I don't believe is appropriate, and I believe it's a disaster waiting to happen. That's kind of my two, my two comments on all this is.
You know, I might, everybody's being quiet, and so, I'm just going by my memory, and I can be corrected if you want to, but this issue has come up many times before, and I think finally, when the, maybe the 2008 document was approved, the board of supervisors actually resolved the issue by saying a majority of the people along that road. And so, I think, basically, the way that was addressed is by the supervisors themselves, 2008.
And I understand that, but that we don't need to keep continuing to compound mistakes. I was the one who brought it up originally. I still think it's wrong. I think it's granting of rights that don't exist, it's not within the county's provision to do so. You're taking somebody who already has access rights and now saying, "No, you need to get your neighbors approved." You're disallowing the access rights that already exist. And I don't know to what extent it was discussed amongst the board of supervisors, but I believe it needs greater attention either here or with that one, because I think it's a problem.
Well, my view is that what we're applying this to is different than if it was just regular living on a piece of property. You know, we're talking about a volume of traffic that's going to be associated to this application, so I think that there has to be some input by the other property owners or at least an opportunity for them.
And I understand the logic behind that, but here's where my mind goes. And I understand the logic behind that, but here's where my mind goes, is today, if I live on that dirt road, I can have as many guests as I want, as many days of the week as I want, without anybody's permission, without a vote of my neighbors, period. The fact that I want to go make some money on having those guests over doesn't change whether or not I have access to use the road or not. Um, and I, like I say, I think it's a degradation of existing property rights that, that we're not entitled to make.
I don't have any comments, so, I don't know, the guys up there, I'm something.
Commissioner Cannon, I tend to agree with Commissioner Moss.
Do you guys want to say anything else?
Let me see, I'll go on just a little bit more on that, you know, I, I can hear what you're saying, I think it's, it's really a bucket of worms, because, uh, if all of a sudden, somebody has a business up at the end of the road, then, you know, everybody's got their share of the road, and so then how are you gonna divide the pie? And there's a lot of questions that come up there that are really beyond the county's ability to solve. And so I think by saying, well, get a majority of the people on the road, uh, okay, then what they're saying is that's okay with the county, but that doesn't resolve the problem, because there's personal challenges that, uh, first, you know, that they have to deal with their neighbors. And, uh, as far as county's concerned, 50% is enough, or 60% is enough, but, uh, the 51%, I don't know what it is, but at any rate, as far as, uh, the rest of the owners on that road, that's their own personal issues to solve, and the county really, uh, would have trouble getting involved in that, I think.
Yeah, on a private road, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would just, uh, not to weigh in either side of this issue, but this was a large discussion at the board, and, you know, whether or not it was in 2008, I know when we took the ag event center ordinance in 2014 or somewhere around that time, that's when it was, it was, uh, heavily discussed, uh, at the board, was I wrong?
Nope, you got it, I just, I have the exact code language.
Right, so there was, yeah, there was a lot of discussion on that, so, I'm not sure if that discussion was, was had at the commission level before it got to the board, but definitely at the board. And that's what resulted in language similar to what we see for this ordinance.
So I'll just read from the ag event center ordinance, this is where this is borrowed from. It's not verbatim, but, um, under access standards for agricultural event centers, sorry, community centers, commercial event centers, agricultural event center, centers, this is section, this is 1756340, "If an agricultural event center is accessed by a private road, the applicant shall provide an affirmative written statement of the legal right to access and use said road for the purposes requested in the application and as may be conditioned. Said statement shall be supported by written approval of two-thirds of the property owners served by the private road. Both shall be included with an initial application submittal. An applicant shall include with said statement the proposal for road maintenance or provide evidence of an existing road maintenance agreement. Applicant shall require, shall be required to indemnify the county for claims resulting from said road access. Which requirement shall be included as a condition of approval of the permit. In addition, an encroachment permit may be required to address ingress, egress, site distance requirements for private road in connection to a county-maintained road." So that language, which would otherwise be analyzed in a conditional use permit for an ag event center, has been included here as part of our development standards.
I, I would keep the language as it is. Um, I think it's a private road, and yes, you could bring all your friends up you want, but we're now talking about a use, and I, I think it's appropriate that, uh, that be discussed with the adjacent neighbors on the private roadside, leave the language as it is.
I would agree with that too. I think, uh, again, as Nikki referenced in it, that it, uh, most private roads usually have a road service agreement between all the residents on there, and so that's something you certainly want to verify, 'cause if there isn't some agreement amongst the numbers that meant, uh, the neighbors to maintain that, then that just really clouds the whole issue. So I think, uh, I think this language is, again, I would agree with it and think it's still appropriate.
My comment would be it puts a, uh, potential for neighbors to extort a disproportionate burden of maintenance onto the, the new applicant, um, in, in order to get their, their vote.
It's certainly possible.
And, and I believe it will be detrimental to the development of, of private wineries that are not accessed right off the public road.
And, and, you know, I appreciate my commissioners helping me understand this shared private road understanding. Uh, you know, for me, I appreciate the spirit of why this is written, and, and I understand there's a difference between the spirit of the law and how it's implemented, and I think the courtesy that's provided here and reaching out to your neighbors, I just, I, I like the idea of that. So, um, I understand why, though, there could be conflicts between neighbors. I, I like, I like the language more than I would be worried about the concern with the conflict of the neighbor. So, I think I'm kind of leaning towards leaving it at this point, but, uh, yeah.
I'd like to ask County Council, Clayton, uh, if we are kind of having a debate on this issue, should we vote to see how we, as a commission, feel about this specific issue, rather than to kind of muddle it up in our, uh, recommendation?
Yeah, so, uh, we've kind of talked about a lot of things, if there are, uh, if the commission is contemplating making a recommendation separate from what's provided in the, uh, staff report and proposed ordinance, it may be better to take those kind of one at a time, um, and make a motion to do this, and then, um, kind of do a wrap-up motion at the end that would be, um, uh, subject to all of the things already previously decided on.
Well, and I'll try to move this process along, um, I will, uh, the language that was just read by Nikki, I would propose that that stay in the, uh, the future policy of this policy that we're considering today. Making a motion. There's a second.
I, you know, Wayne and I, I don't have the language up there. I would, I would like to see a recommendation or a motion that just, uh, goes ahead and, and moves forward on the, uh, ordinance, uh, as proposed and as amended by the staff today.
So, just as a procedural matter, uh, Commissioner Nader has made a motion, so now you, um, uh,
Waiting for a second.
If there's no second, then that motion fails, and then you can make another motion, but that's, that's the process, I, I guess you can't make another motion at this point, you would need to kind of make, make it through the first motion first, but.
Is there a second with the commissioners with the way that it was stated?
Well, if not, then, Anders, it's all yours.
I don't have the language in front of me, so if you could read the language, that'd be great.
Nikki, would you mind doing that for us?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, what I was reading from was the commercial, commercial event center, agricultural event center code, just to draw those parallels, but the board approved that with very similar language, so.
But that's what's gonna go forward with this, what we're doing right today, right? That language would go forward.
Yeah, it, it, it's not exactly like that, but let me pull it up.
Say, Nikki? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry.
Nikki, yeah.
For everyone's reference, it's on page nine of the staff report, and I think it's, uh,
One fourteen.
Yeah, one fourteen in red.
So, um, Commissioner Howgie, one fourteen in the staff report?
I'm going there.
Okay.
But that, that language, what you submitted today, correct?
I see, I have one more question.
Ready to, to begin taking a look at, I think the first item should be certification of the environmental impact report, so I would make a motion to certify the environmental impact report, uh, and I don't have the language in that resolution, uh, but it is a recommendation to the, uh, the Board of Supervisors, and then just a comment, um, really want to appreciate the staff in responding to our comments from the last meeting, and I also appreciate those persons who made specific recommendations to the ordinance, uh, in their recommendations, uh, that is extremely helpful, I want to encourage that. So, I would like to make a motion, uh, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors a certified environmental impact report, uh, with the staff findings and conditions.
Well, I'll second it.
Was that, um, council, was that, does it need to read it word for word, 'cause?
I, the, the recommendation is up there just, uh, for reference for the commissioners, but the commissioners can certainly make their own motion. I think, uh, Commissioner Howgie's motion largely tracks with number one on the recommendation, it's up on the screen. Uh, I didn't find anything significantly different from it that, um, would cause staff to recommend something else.
Okay, let's take a vote then.
I have a first from Mr. Howgie, a second from Mr. Nader, so could I have a vote from Mr. Cannon, please?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
So, painfully, yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I, so what's an hour?
Yeah, so, uh, the second recommendation on the staff report is to adopt the ordinance. Uh, this would be, I, the time to, I guess, discuss, um, certain modifications if needed. I, I believe staff is recommending two additional changes that they identified in their memo, uh, when they presented the item. So, um, if the commission is inclined to include those in the, uh, motion, it would just be, uh, the ordinance with the modifications requested by staff and presented, uh, to the commission in their memo and read into the record previously.
Okay, I'd make the motion that we adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance supported by the findings contained in the staff report in our recommendation of Board of Supervisors, and that we also include the, uh, two recommendations by staff that address the Planning Director's determination of rental parcel size disparity and clarity on the water quality standards that applies to all operations.
Second.
Let's take a vote. Um, we can have, we can have discussion after the second, yeah.
Would maybe ask those making the motion to, to consider, uh, adding the modification to the, the simplification to the attendees as events with fewer than 50 people and events with greater than 50, as opposed to what we have now, which is a birthday party has one number of attendees, a wine pairing, a dinner has another, and, uh, and then just the, the dinner event has a different, but they're all like 50 or under. I'd like to see that just be lumped in and, and you have.
Was that actually in the, uh, proposed zoning ordinance, what you're talking about?
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah, actually excluded all weddings.
Where is it specifically?
I think it's back on like 57 or something like that.
Yeah, that's not, it's not the entire definition, so I would have you turn to page 106 in the staff report. And, and I would make a note that we, we did, um,
Where's to make reference to birthday parties?
Private parties, fundraisers, concerts, social or educational gatherings where outside alcohol may be allowed, and events where the property owner is compensated in exchange for the use of the site and facility, referred to as a facility rental. Uh, things like weddings are, are, are not considered agricultural promotional events, we've analyzed those separately from agricultural promotional events.
This is under special events?
Correct. Again, you know, these lists aren't meant to be exhaustive, um, uh, there is some flexibility there, but we, we have made a determination that a wedding would fall into strictly a special event, not an agricultural promotional event.
But as far as having allowing less people than 50 people, where, where is that in here? Like for a birthday party, you can only have?
So the ordinance doesn't reflect the, the limitations by type of event that the slide did?
I would just note for purposes of interpretation of the ordinance, the special event definition is an event of greater than 50 people at one time where the agricultural related component is subordinate to the primary purpose of the event, and then the following part of that is, uh, examples that would be included in that definition, but it's not, uh, as, as Nikki mentioned, an exhaustive list. Um, those are just examples of what would fit in that category.
And then, though, so the limitations that we saw on the slide, the 35 for a birthday party, the 45 for a, a, a wine pickup party and what have you, those are not, that's not in the actual ordinance?
Uh, those are just examples.
Just examples, so we are dealing then with either a less than 50 or greater than 50 as far as that, I'm sorry, this.
Then you're good, you're not suggesting any changes.
Okay, we have a first and a second from the original motion, let's take a vote with that.
I have a first from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Nader, so, uh, vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yep.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Howgie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we're done with this item, and, uh, we have one left. Not had anything to eat.
Yeah.
Do we want to talk about that?
I have a suggestion, if we take just a 15-minute break, come back at, or a little over, uh, make a recess and come back at 2:45, for the folks with the last item who were interested, Brady Vineyard, uh, I'll let, I'll let the chair.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Let's, let's take a 15-minute break, uh, and then that'll put us back at 2:45, 16-minute break, so we'll, we'll, we'll come back in 16 minutes. Oh, my mic's on. Okay. Gotta be hard to... Who like, I mean, can't be basic. Yeah. Yeah. Why, I don't... It takes me a big lot... Okay, shall we, what time is it? Is that what I said? Oh, okay, we're ready to go. Is Sam with us, or is he, has he, Sam, are you there? All right, well, I think we have a quorum still, so I'm not sure if Sam has left. Let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order from break and move on to our final timed item, which is Brady Vineyard subdivision. Members of the public may now call in at 530-886-1800 to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Chris, Chris Schmidt, oh yeah, we'll bring the applicant in, ready to respond as well. But Chris, as soon as you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Chris Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. The project before you today is an application from Cook Development Consulting Services for a project in the Dry Creek, West Placer area. The project site is located at the northwest corner of Brady Lane and Vineyard Road. In the Dry Creek area, you can see the shaded area in the blue is the City of Roseville, so this is right at the edge of the City of Roseville. Of properties to the east are high-density, and clearly, properties to the north, south, and west are rural residential in nature. A close-up of the project site, basically just grassland, a few scattered trees, although there is a tributary to Dry Creek that runs along the western property line. Project site is 35 acres. There is a two-acre privately-owned parcel off of Vineyard Road that is not part of the project, so this project does surround that lot. A few photos, the one on the left is looking down Vineyard Road towards the west, and then the second one is looking northward along Brady Lane, and there's a church you can see on the left, and then a subdivision on the right-hand side in the City of Roseville. Couple photos of the project site itself, the one on the bottom shows a drainage that runs east to west through the site. The one, the picture on the left is the tributary along the western property edge, and then the one on the right is that two-acre parcel that this project surrounds. Land use designations on the project site are rural low-density residential, just a little bit on the western property line, greenbelt and open space which encompasses that riparian or drainage, the tributary, and then the balance of the site is low-density residential, one and two dwelling units an acre, and that is consistent with the properties to the north and to the south. And then you have City of Roseville on the east, and then kitty-corner to the site is a subdivision in Placer County, the vineyards, which is zoned high-density, or land use designation of high-density. Zoning on the site is farm development reserve, 4.6 acre minimum on the west, open space along the tributary, and then the balance of the site is residential single-family, combining agriculture, minimum building site of 20,000 square feet, and that is similar to properties to the north and to the south. I will point out that there's a development reserve area designated in the community plan. This is for properties north and south of Vineyard Road, and also extends down to PFE Road to the south. So, there was clear intention in the community plan that some point in the future this area might be developed, and the thinking was that at that time, a specific plan would be necessary to coordinate the development of that development reserve area, so it'd be a comprehensive plan for future growth in that portion of the community plan. So, when the project first came in, in May 2018, their proposal was for 124 lots, and I'll just highlight the areas that have changed based on public feedback and also staff comments. We lost three lots along the riparian area to be consistent with the community plan, which says that backyard should not, tributaries or drainages should not have private lots adjacent to them, it should be open, so front-loaded streets, which you see there. A cul-de-sac that was to access five lots off of Vineyard Road was dropped to provide a better buffer to the vacant land to the west. Just a decorative bulbout was dropped on the internal street. The applicant agreed to lose one lot, get back to Vineyard Road, and shrink those lots along Vineyard to provide a bigger buffer along Vineyard Road of landscape space and to widen those lots, and we'll talk about that later in the presentation. And those changes allowed for a 35-foot buffer along Vineyard Road. So, the project before you today, there is a minor boundary line adjustment to split off a three-acre parcel in the southwest corner of the site that would be not a part of this subdivision, so the project site would be 32 acres of development and then the three-acre not a part of this subdivision parcel. 118 residential single-family homes, a gated entryway off of Brady Lane, emergency vehicle access only off of Vineyard Road, a sewer lift station to serve this project and some vacant properties to the north. It includes five acres of restricted open space along that tributary, 1.25 acres of park, 1.4 acres of landscape area mostly along the frontages, a .3-mile public trail along that open space, for a total of 22% open space. So, a list of entitlements the project requires, it's a general plan, community plan amendment to change the designation from low-density residential, open space and rural low-density residential to medium-density residential and open space, a rezone from residential single-family combining agriculture, minimum building site of 20,000 square feet, open space and farm development reserve, to RS residential single-family, minimum building site of 4,000 square feet and open space, a vested tentative subdivision map, a conditional use permit to allow a top lot within the open space zoning district, a variance to increase allowable building coverage on residential lots from 40% to 50% for one-story units, and then that minor boundary line adjustment to create that three-acre not a part of this subdivision parcel. So, there was an EIR prepared for this project, and notice of preparation was published January 30th of 2019. Public comment period ended on February 28th, 2019, and we had a scoping meeting February 21st of 2019. The draft EIR was released last fall, November. Your Commission had a public hearing on that document on December 12th, 2019, and on April 10th, the final EIR was released for public review. The project does include a GPA and rezones, so there is an affordable housing obligation. There's a number of measures to comply with that. The applicant can build onsite, acquire or build offsite, pay an in lieu fee, or come up with a plan acceptable to the county to meet that obligation. So, to keep the options open, the applicant actually looked at constructing up to 12, or, let me back up. If the applicant could construct and de-restrict 12 lots as affordable, so obligation is 10%, so 12 units, they could designate 12 lots or units as affordable. They could also construct six accessory dwelling units and de-restrict the main unit and that ADU as affordable, so you get 12. And then along with that option, providing buyers of up to six additional lots, the option to construct a primary dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit. Those additional six units would not be required to be de-restricted. So, in total, the project could include 118 primary units and up to 12 accessory dwelling units. The applicant does prefer to pay an in lieu fee, but we did look at the option of building onsite. This just shows the rezoning, farm, open space and residential single-family, the open space in medium-density residential. The project is split up into two villages. The northwest village includes 80 lots ranging from 5,000 to 8,600 square feet, with a 5,600 square foot average. And then the southeast village closest to existing development, 38 lots, a little bit larger, 6,600 to 11,500 square feet, 7,600 square foot average. We've talked about this on some other projects early this year. The applicant is asking for a coverage variance, increase maximum coverage from 40 to 50% for one-story units. And this graphic here just shows you on a typical lot in this subdivision of 6,300 square feet, we can get about 2,500 square feet of coverage, which provides for 1,900 to 2,000 square feet of living space. Raising that to 50%, we get 3,100 square feet of coverage and about 2,500 to 2,700 square feet of living space, so larger homes, which the public is clamoring for on smaller lots. And this just shows in the region what some of the coverage standards are. Some of them have no coverage limitations, some are as high as 60 in Lincoln, Roseville, similar zoning district, 45% coverage, and some are a little bit lower, Folsom in Jolo So, this displays how the lot size is compared to neighboring development. So, clearly, in the blue and the purple, you see larger lots on the northwest, south, but the proposed lots are larger than neighboring development. Elk Hill subdivision in Roseville has 3,100 square foot minimum lots, Vineyards Estates to the east, 5,000 square foot minimum, and then the Vineyards project in Placer County is 3,600 square foot minimum. So, this transitions from that higher density to a little lower density, larger lots heading east to west. So, project frontages, 50% of the homes back in Brady Lane are required to be 50% single-story, so half of them, four of the eight, have to be single-story. We don't want a bunch of two-story homes lined up there. We also heard from residents to the east, they didn't want a wall of homes. All the homes back in Vineyard Road would be single-story, and these would be wider lots because we lost that one lot along Vineyard, so 67 feet wide versus the typical 60-foot wide on neighboring blocks. The two-story homes along Brady would have to have enhanced facades and also on the sides, just to give it a more character, not a blocky look on those homes. Substantial landscaping plan, including street trees, frontage landscaping, and then the park areas would be heavily landscaped. Three park areas of 1.25 acres. This shows the top lot, main park in the center of the site. Industrial facilities include a .3-mile public trail, sidewalks along Brady Lane, DG path, multipurpose trail along Vineyard Road, and then also internal sidewalks throughout the Look at the gated entryway, heavily landscaped. Project frontage includes Prank Myrtle and Theodore Cedars along Vineyard Road, London Plain and Pistachio Trees along Brady, and then a heavily landscaped corner of Vineyard and Brady. The backyard for that Lot 111 is 90 feet from back of curb, so pretty substantial step back there. This shows those landscape areas along Vineyard and Brady Lane, 35 feet of landscaping, including a berm... including a berm. It would be topped by a five-foot tall open iron fence. So pedestrians or travelers on Brady and Vineyard won't be seeing much of the new homes. Offsite work includes the frontage improvements and then also connecting the project from the sewer lift station to existing trunk line within Woodhills Boulevard. Now, this shows the work along Vineyard Road. Vineyard Road would be widened along the project frontage and then tapered down as it heads west. And then Brady Lane would also be expanded. As if you've visited the site, the width along the church frontage would be carried southward to Vineyard Road. So since the release of the draft EIR, there were two significant changes dealing with traffic. The vehicle miles traveled discussion was added to the final EIR. And as we've talked about before, while the transportation circulation chapter of the EIR focuses on traffic congestion, level of service is no longer utilized to determine significant impacts, according to CEQA. And also, the second change was the Dry Creek Joint Elementary School District adopted a facilities master plan that changed the district boundaries for schools. So for this project, rather than students going to Creekview Ranch Elementary, which is to the west, so most people will be traveling down Vineyard in the morning to drop their kids off at Creekview, the students will now attend Heritage Oaks Elementary School and Silverado Middle School in the city of Roseville. So they'd be going east or north from the project to take their kids to school. So there results in 80 vehicles on Vineyard Road west of the project site during the AM peak hour. And that's a drop from 144 vehicles. It was listed in the draft EIR. So we had to do a new traffic analysis based on the new district boundaries. The 55% reduction of project trips along Vineyard in the AM peak hour. And that's good news for a lot of the commenters who talked about traffic congestion on Vineyard with parents taking their kids to school. So the traffic study determined about 1,202 daily trips in and out of the project, 93 in the AM peak hour, 124 in the PM peak hour. And just for reference, Vineyard Road volume is about 5,600 vehicles per day. So we did the traffic analysis using the method of assessment for both Roseville and county. Addition of the project traffic under cumulative plus project conditions does result in an increase above level of service standards at three intersections. That's Baseline Road and Brady Lane, which is in the city of Roseville, Cook Riolo and Vineyard Road in Placer County, and also Vineyard Road and Brady Lane at the project corner. The project is not required to make improvements at these intersections. Project's impact on these intersections will be paid through applicable traffic impact fees. So habitat impacts, mostly grassland, 23 acres of grassland, just .1 acres of riparian woodland, which is here. And then disturbed, 3.1 acres closest to the church. 3.3 acres riparian woodland along the tributary is preserved. And also 5.2 acres of grassland, you see here. Wetland impacts, most of the impacts, it's .23 acres. There are drainage ditches and swales. One of the pictures showed the one that comes from this neighborhood drains over here to the tributary. That would be filled. And then this seasonal swale here would also be filled. But 8.3 acres of wetland are avoided, with just 2.3 acre, or .23 acres impacted. Tree impacts, not very many, seven protected trees, 157 inches of DBH. So community plan consistency, one of the things we heard from the public was this was not consistent with the community plan. And yes, there is a GPA required in a rezone, but it does follow many of the key goals of the community plan, including encouraging land uses that are compatible with those uses existing and planned by adjoining jurisdictions. Locates urban and suburban development where urban services, including schools, commercial facilities and transportation facilities are readily available. Protects and enhances the corrective plan area in a way that is compatible with the physical and natural constraints. So we're avoiding that habitat area. Provides a safe, diverse, efficient transportation circulation system with those frontage improvements. And the rate of development does not exceed the capacity of the county, community, special districts and utilities to provide services in a timely, orderly and economic manner. Two key land use goals I want to point out. Preserve outstanding visual features and natural resources, which we're doing, and provide compatibility between neighboring land uses, which you see with the buffering and the landscaping and the setbacks in the project design. Speaking of community design, retaining your natural features, that's a consistent standard in the community plan. It's also consistent with key goals of the land use policies. Provides for private ownership and maintenance of open spaces so that open space lot will be maintained by the HOA. Retain your open space features. Use green belts on landscape areas along roadways as a design feature, which you see in the 35-foot setback in landscaping. A logical expansion of the area by developing infill area close to existing developed areas rather than in an outlining area, which this clearly is, we're right at the edge of Roseville. We're not expanding public services in areas with significant value as rural open space. And development activities are proposed in areas of least environmental sensitivity, which this project does. So back in September 2008, the original project, the larger 130-lot project, was presented to the MAC. Issues raised were the density of the project, traffic, pedestrian safety, particularly along Vineyard Road, the number of lots, buffering, and then some angst about the community plan change. But we did not take this back to the MAC as an action item due to the coronavirus. So with that, staff does recommend, the commission recommended the board of supervisors do the following, subject to the conditions of approval based on the findings found in the staff report, certify the final EIR that was prepared pursuant to CEQA, adopt a mitigation monitoring reporting program supported by and incorporated by reference in its entirety. The findings of fact included as attachment F in the staff report. Adopt a resolution to amend the Dry Creek West Placid Community Plan. Adopt an ordinance to rezon the project site. Approve the subdivision, vesting tentative subdivision map. Approve the variance to lot coverage, allowing up to 50% coverage for single-story residences where 40% is normally allowed. Approve the conditional use permit for the subdivision to allow those active park areas in the open space zoning district. And then approve a minor boundary line adjustment to create the three-acre, not a part of this subdivision parcel. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I'd like to invite Mr. Cook, the applicant, to add to the presentation or make any comments that he wishes to.
Yeah, not much to add to Chris's presentation, given the level of detail that he provides. But I think at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission. And then I can respond later with any further closing comments, if that's okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any immediate questions for staff or for the applicant at this point? Are you okay if I move to public comment and see how, okay. Thank you, Chris and Mr. Cook. We're going to move to public comment, and we'll invite you back to respond to some of the issues that are raised with the public. So I'm going to open public comment. Again, call in, the number is 530-886-1800. So is anyone on the line? No one's on the line right now, but we're going to pause for a couple of minutes and make sure people know they have a time to call in if they like. Okay.
Good afternoon. You are in the hearing room live. If you would please state your name for the record and place your listening device on mute. You will have three minutes.
This is Mike Garabedian with Placer County tomorrow. I have a question. I don't think you mentioned in your review, in the staff review, about the Roseville rail yard study of October 2004. This is one of the main studies that identified the pollution impacts from the rail yards. I guess the key question would be, how far is this project from the rail yards?
Okay. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Garabedian?
Hello?
Hi. Can you hear me? Mr. Garabedian, can you hear me?
Mr. Garabedian, can you turn off your listening device?
Let's see, I hope I'm still online.
Yep, we can hear you.
Well, yes, I do. I, let's see, I'm having trouble again with the coordination of the two. My problem, I suppose, if I'm still online. So the contours were roughly half a mile, some of the concentrations of pollution. And the question is, if this area is in the downwind contour area from the rail yard for concentration of particulate matter and also cancer concentration studies. I assume that was in the EIR and it would be good to have a, which I have not reviewed, but good to have your review of this project in relation to the rail yards and air study. Thank you.
Okay. Is anyone else in the queue?
Good afternoon. You are live in the hearing room. If you would please state your name for the record. Put your listening device on mute and you will have three minutes.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Berkema. And I have a couple of comments to make on this project. One is the 50% coverage. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can hear you.
So the 50% coverage was on smaller lots, on single-story, yet I heard there's double-story there. So I don't think that the coverage calculations sound like they're right. The most critical issue I heard was the affordable housing. As I, as I listen today, yes, I am, sorry. As I listen today to the affordable housing, I heard one go by without affordable housing. We actually didn't mention the affordable housing on the winery and brewery, which is going to be a big deal. And now with similar divisions that Mr. Cook has put in, I hear talk of in-lu housing. Shaw provides, told me that there was going to be affordable housing for the last project Mr. Cook did at White Hawks. And yet I heard in-lu housing being horse-traded down as a border supervisor meeting. I think that because the county is so far behind on their HNA numbers that under approximately 500 have not been built. I think it's imperative that the community get the affordable housing. I also had an issue with the gate. Gates should, I think people should be allowed to utilize any pathways, walk-through. And then the most important one was that there was a comment made by the fire district that there wasn't appropriate, that they were concerned about the traffic. And that was just dismissed with a comment that said, oh, we checked on it and it's not an issue. Similar to Placer residences with response times, there should be data provided that says, here's the response to the community agency. Placer County shouldn't be allowed to just strong-arm and say, it's not an issue. There should be some documentation that says, is it decreasing response times? Yes or no? And what is the data? In this time and day and age where people are not even able to get fire insurance, I don't think it should be dismissed that quickly. Regarding the Granite Bay, or sorry, the community plan issues, again, Mr. Cook has, time and time again, comes in and the community plans are ignored. And I think that there should be a little bit stronger look at why that is with certain developers. It seems like there's special interest being allowed for certain developers. So I hope you'll consider especially the affordable housing comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Good afternoon. You are live in the hearing room. You will have three minutes to speak. We'd appreciate it if you'd turn your listening device down to mute. And please set your name for the record.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me record even. I was off of Vineyard. So a few things that bother me about the final environment and impact report. And first, the fact that we've changed semantics on the traffic. The bottom line stays that the level of service is an F on Vineyard. It, because it's already bad, apparently adding more doesn't seem to trigger anything in the EIR. And that's like saying, you've got 10 people living in a two-bedroom house, but that's okay, all add 20 more. Because it doesn't make any sense. The school boundaries, while the immediate, the immediate impact of that is going to be more positive, however, school boundaries are fluid. There's another school being built at Vineyard and Friday, which is going to cause school boundaries to be muted. And we don't know where they're going to be. So, you know, it was like the middle left term on Cook Riolo, they stayed there for a couple of years to appease some people and then one day it just disappeared. We can't have, it was made as appeasements to residents so that later on, we can go back and change them. The, and to fix the traffic, we have an environmental impact fee. Well, that's fine. That, once again, that's like paying your brother-in-law money because you just want people to live in your house. It doesn't help the residents here on this road. And I really believe that, while I understand that during our current pandemic, we have difficulties with what we're doing, but this current format that you have for public comment is it's highly discriminatory to elderly people and people who are technologically deficient. It, you do your best to understand that, but I don't think it's good enough. I really believe- understand that, but I don't think it's good enough. I really believe that this should all be continued until we can have a proper public response. And thank you very much.
Going to pause and see if anyone else calls in.
While we're pausing, maybe just a comment, based on the last comment we heard, you know. Well, I understand that this new system is a little bit cumbersome as far as calling in and that. I think there's actually people out there who find it intimidating to stand up and speak in public, who might actually appreciate the ability to phone in comments. And while some people might be technologied out, I think others would be invited and more likely to participate because they don't have the, you know, that intimidation of standing up and speaking in public. And so there are positives to this, as well as, as well as a little frustration, I understand.
Okay, with delay, I'd like to close public comment at this. Public comment person calling yourself up? Close public comment, and then I'd like to invite, you know, Chris back up, and then certainly Mr. Cook, if they want to address, at least the three callers brought up some issues that would probably be good to address.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Dave Cook.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Garabedian raised the question of a rail yard study. It's somewhat dated, but just to answer his question, given the benefit of being at my computer and having access to Google Earth, from the southeast corner of the Brady Vineyard project, the closest point of the rail yard is about nine-tenths of a mile almost due south. And I know on a previous project that I believe may have been in closer proximity, this was evaluated in the EIR, and according to the Health Department, was no longer an issue. I think there have been some updates to that reference study. So that, that was the first question. Second question, Ms. Burkema, the only thing I can say on the affordable housing is that my client is not a builder, and whoever buys and develops and builds homes on this project will make the decision consistent with whatever the county policy is at that point in time. What Chris expressed was, in fact, the preference of my client, but in fact, the county policy may be adopted by time somebody comes forward on this, so that this project can do its part to contribute to affordable housing in the county. And then finally, Mr. Reagan's comment, I'd have to let Nick or Chris comment on the level of service on Vineyard, but remind the commission that the LOF standard is no longer applicable. I don't think that it's F along Vineyard, it might have been one intersection, but that's, that's the extent of my responses and comments on those questions raised by the public.
Now, I'll just add a couple other issues raised were the lot coverage. So for two-story homes, it would remain at 40%. Just for one-story homes, we'd be bumped up to 50%. Gated subdivisions in Dry Creek West Placards, there are no clear standards in the community plan regarding gates. There's multiple subdivisions in Dry Creek that do have gates. And that's it, unless you have other questions.
I'm not seeing any questions, so I thank you for your time, and I think we'll bring it to the commission for discussion and, and consider, you know, the staff recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, if there is no discussion, I would be ready to make a motion. Are we doing these one at a time?
Yes, there's seven, seven items.
Okay. I recommend that the planning commission take action to recommend the following to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the findings found in the staff report packet. One, that we certify the Brady Vineyard subdivision final environmental impact report prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, and adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting program supported by and incorporated by reference in its entirety, the findings of fact included in attachment F of the staff report packet.
Mr. Cannon, second.
We got a first and a second, so we'll take a vote.
Yes, I have a first by Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader is, has stepped out. Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
He smiled. That was a yes?
No, we can't hear you yet. Larry, one for yes, two for no.
We can tell he's saying yes.
That's a yes.
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I would further move that we adopt a resolution to amend the Dry Creek West Placer community plan. Land use diagram has shown an attachment E of the staff report packet.
Mr. Cannon, second.
We got a first and a second. Let's take a vote.
I believe staff recommendations, this is a recommendation to the board.
I thought I covered that with the first paragraph there. If not, I'll do it each time.
That works.
Okay. Okay, I have a first from Mr. Moss and a second from Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further move, that we recommend to the board adopt an ordinance to rezone the Brady Vineyard subdivision project site, APNs 473-020002000 and 473-020013000, from RS-AG-B-20O and FBR to RS-B4 and O, has shown an attachment E of the staff report packet.
Mr. Cannon, second.
I have a first by Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further move, we recommend to a board, to the board, to approve the Brady Vineyard subdivision vesting tentative subdivision map.
This would be subject to the conditions of approval as well.
And I would make that recommendation subject to the conditions of approval.
Mr. Cannon, second.
I have a first from Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further move, that we recommend to the board of supervisors that they approve the variance to lot coverage, allowing up to 50% coverage for a single-story residence where 40% is normally allowed.
Mr. Cannon, second.
I have a first from Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Cannon, so a fir, I'm sorry, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I further move that we recommend the board approve the conditional use permit for the Brady Vineyard subdivision.
This would also be subject to the conditions of approval.
Subject to the conditions of approval.
Mr. Cannon, second.
I have a first from Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
I further move that we recommend the board approve a minor boundary line adjustment to create the three-acre not part of this subdivision parcel.
Mr. Cannon, second.
First from Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You finished them, right?
Yeah, I don't think there's no appeal or anything on that, because it's just a recommendation.
Yeah, no, it's a recommendation. So I want to thank everyone for their time today. It's a long meeting, and staff, great job, presentations to the public. Thank you for your patience with calling in, and we feel as though we heard everyone, and this worked well, and want to thank you for your time. We're going to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.